Well, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. On behalf of the members of the School Board and the Superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. A former is present to transact the business of the School Division. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. We are all adapting to this new temporary way of life, and the School Board is as well. We are implementing new procedures for our meetings. We are practicing social distancing in cooperation with the Governor's orders. We are taking steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff, students, and the public. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting, time to be included in the official meeting record. Individuals who provide comments in person will comply with the speaker guidelines. All comments will be provided to the School Board. We are committed to conducting our meetings in an open manner, and we will make every effort to ensure public input. We value and appreciate your partnership. And so now, we're going to begin tonight's meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Best, would you take it? Take it away.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its free public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we will now have item number two, which is Audience with individuals and/or groups, not to exceed 30 minutes. Thank you all for coming this evening, those of you who were able to come out and speak. As we mentioned earlier, there is additionally opportunity to make comments via the web. We have some guidelines for our speakers. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting, time to be included in the official meeting record. And all comments will be provided to the School Board. During our meetings, we provide time for the public to address the Board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. So if time does not permit at the beginning portion, please, we ask you to stick around, and there will be a second opportunity to address the Board later in the meeting. The Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your concerns, and we'll get back to you at a later time. Please combine with our three-minute time limit, as you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, a red light and beep indicates your time is up. Please do not remove your mask while speaking into the microphone. And thank you. As your name is called, please come forward, and I do have a card at this time.
A card?
Mr. Kelly Sibley?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank you all for the efforts you've made, been making on behalf of the students and the staff to keep them safe and to try to continue in educating them in these unprecedented times. I'm in the unique position of being a parent of a Gen Ed student, excuse me, and one in the special education low incident population, and that's what I'm here to speak with you in regards today. I'm trying to come to an understanding as to how the school district came to a decision of no in-person instruction for those with the severest needs and those with English as a second language learning. The level of hand-on-hand instruction that is needed to provide especially to those with the severe special needs of the most basic of instruction is not something that can be provided virtually. A parent and a caregiver, depending upon who would be the one that would be assisting during the virtual learning of these first marking period, are not really going to be, have the instruction knowledge on how to provide and assist to have any consequence of real learning for these students. I have taken advantage of the workshops that have been provided. I did the virtual learning at the end of the school year, which really, for my student, was not of consequence. I did do the in-person virtual, I did do the in-person two-week. It was, well, it ended up being seven days because of the weather, but the eight days of four-hour instruction, which to me was amazing that they got an opportunity to do that. And I did take advantage of the virtual prior to the two-week. But honestly, the best time for my student, who is the severe special needs, is when she had the opportunity to go into the in-person learning. I do understand that there's a lot of health concerns in relationship to providing this, but if there is staff that is willing to work as they were able to do that for this two-week in-school summer learning, I'm just trying to understand why that's not something that could be considered and provided to our students that are in most need. I'll give you an example of a story that my daughter, on the third day of summer school, there was, the bus could not come get her because the street was blocked off, so she was already in her wheelchair, ready to go to school. The caregiver had to take her out of her wheelchair, and she didn't understand what's going on because she's nonverbal, started very much upset, screaming, got into the car, was riding behind the bus the whole way, was very upset the whole way, screaming, very upset. But then, as soon as she saw the school sign, it changed to the squeals of happiness because she was so excited that she was going to get to go to school. For our children, a lot of times, time is not really on their side. So the social interaction that they get when they come to school is very vital in their development, not only educationally, but socially, personally, and just, it's good to have a different atmosphere amongst people other than the people who are caregiving for them on a regular basis. So it's been very difficult for me, while I am also sad for my other child, who would be starting high school and would want him the experiences of it, I do know that he, educationally, is going to be able to still progress. But my daughter really will not be able to. We've already been out of school since March. And so, it's just trying to understand how the school system and how the School Board would be able to, you know, provide the minutes that are a part of her IEP, any kind of makeup time in relationship to that. Sorry, that's my daughter back there. And, you know, just trying to understand with the state allowing it as of Phase One to have some in-person instruction, how the decision was made to not, at this time, provide any of that at this time. I do know that they had the slide in reference to how many students were invited to the summer school and how many were attended, and my daughter was one of the 11. But I do want to question, how was the invitation made? Because I personally just kept following up, as opposed to saying that I would necessarily say I received a personal invitation from my daughter. I listened to the voicemails, I listened to the emails, and not all parents are going to be doing that to know that maybe this was provided. But even still, the difficulty that it takes for a student who needs continual, to be able to continually plan on something, it's very difficult to suddenly say for two weeks, let me change your pattern of what your day goes by, and let me change daycare and those kind of things. So while I do know that was a low number, I don't know if people really understand how much that takes for a parent to have to make those changes to provide that time for them. So I just thank you very much for letting me speak today. But I do want to just make sure that the voices of our students are really being heard, because it is very difficult. They don't have voices of their own. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional cards at this time?
No, sir.
Any additional cards? There being no additional cards, we will now move on to Section Three, which is our Consent Agenda. Board members, the items in the Consent Agenda were provided in your Board packets prior to the meeting. Can I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
All right, there is a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Thank you. Motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? All right, there being no further discussion. Madam Court, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Searls Law?
Please, Mrs. Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right, we're now on to Section Four. Okay, so we have some comments by the Superintendent in regards to our, in regards to some appointments. Dr. Parker, would you like to make comments at this time?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Now that we're back in person, it's always an honor to be able to introduce our recent appointments. We do have two this evening that were part of the Consent Agenda, who have joined us today. I'd like to give them a formal introduction. I'd first like to introduce Mr. Glenn Schofield, the new Director of Procurement. And Glenn's there in the back. Welcome, Glenn. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Schofield should not be a new face. He's, he joined the Purchasing Department last December and is currently the Senior Procurement Specialist in our Procurement Department. Mr. Schofield has over 20 years of experience in the purchasing world, and he has worked for several companies in the areas of city government, marine military ship repair, distribution manufacturing, and construction fields. Prior to coming to Newport News Public Schools, he most recently worked as the TE Connectivity, Joe Kill, Inc., and the City of Newport News, three different places. We are pleased to have Mr. Schofield joining us today, and, sir, we look forward to your leadership as the new Director of our Procurement Department. And Glenn, we normally introduce family members. I see you're alone this evening, but do you have any, would you like to say something to the Board?
Thank you, thank you, sir. Look forward to your leadership.
And our second appointment this evening is for an Administrative Assistant at Crittenden Middle School. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Bellamy as the new Administrative Assistant at Crittenden Middle School. Good evening, Mr. Bellamy. Mr. Bellamy started his teaching career in Newport News Public Schools in 2007, and he has served for 13 years as a CTE teacher, Career Technical Education teacher, and lead teacher at Warwick High School. Mr. Bellamy also works as an adjunct professor at Hampton University, and he is joining the Crittenden team this year on the administrative team to get that, get valuable experience in the administrative world, and hopefully make a transition one day to become an Assistant Principal and hopefully Principal one day. So, Mr. Bellamy, I think you have some folks joining you this evening. Would you like to introduce your family member?
Absolutely. First, good evening, Dr. Parker and members of the Board. Thank you. I look forward to this opportunity, as well as a productive 2021 school year. With me, I have my beautiful wife, Seeny, who has been with me through a lot of the transitions. So I'm very, very thankful. And also, if I could, if I could acknowledge and thank everyone at Warwick High School, Enterprise Academy, and the Career Technical Education Department for ploring to me over the years to prepare me for this moment.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Congratulations. And, sir, we look forward to your leadership as well at Crittenden Middle School. And that concludes the appointments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Some very exciting appointments, and we look forward to great things from those folks. Then, we'll now move us to item number four on the agenda, which is action items. There are no action items on the agenda this evening, which will then move us to item number five, Reports and Information. And so now, at this time, we will hear our Back to School Report.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm getting my notes here together. One second. I was given some directions here. So, we have prepared a Back to School Report, as you're aware. This will be a very different report than we've had in many years. That being said, since we have so many different changes to our operations starting school virtually. So, this evening's presentation for the Board will include, first, our operations, and then we'll go into technology instruction and some of the other areas that are associated with our school start. So I believe we are beginning with plant services. So, and I was, wanted to see if he was joining us or joining in virtually. So our presentation will start virtually with the one presenter, and I think Mrs. Rousseau will also join us virtually as well. So we'll get started with the presentation with our Director of School Operations, Mr. Wade. You may be, go ahead and get us started if you were on the call.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Parker, and guests that are attended. This evening, I'd like to share with y'all some of the construction projects that we have underway this summer. First, we have, it's just a summary of a list, Dibby High School Aviation Academy relocation. I'll touch base on that real quick. This is, this has been quite a challenge. We've had a lot of rain this month. We've had COVID cases through the process. We do have eight classroom modular unit in place and should be up and occupant-ready here in about a week and a half. I'll share with you some of the pictures there. The top left is standing in the new wind tunnel, and that's looking at the new aviation lab and on into the reception area. On the top right is concrete where they're finishing to build the wind tunnel. The wind tunnel was a project in itself, getting it out of the old Aviation Academy. We had to completely disassemble it, package it up, and now it's sitting underneath the storage area at Plant Services, and that's scheduled to be installed starting next week. The bottom right picture is classroom inside one of the new modulars. The R T C area of the modulars is conditioned, as we said it would be. So everybody should be pretty happy with that. Moving on. Okay, another thing we have going on, we have some HVAC replacements this year. Starting at the top left, you can see a new rooftop unit sitting on the top of Hilton. You can tell that by the water in the background. The center picture is some new circulation pumps at Woodside in the boiler room. The far right-hand top is the attic space, which will become more of a pressurized plenum area for the air conditioning and heating system at Deer Park. The bottom-left picture is also the cooling car for the water source system that we're installing at Deer Park. The center picture, bottom, is a picture of concrete being broken up to install the curbing and to hook up a new rooftop unit. And the bottom-right picture is a new heat pump system installed in a classroom, one of the classrooms in the metal building out back up South Morrison. We did three gym floor replacements this year at Gildersleeve, Hines, and Dutch Row. As you can see, what a difference that made. The picture on your right is the old grandwood floor, and that's what pretty much all three of the sites look like. And the picture on the left is the new picture of Center Court at Gildersleeve Middle School. Kids should be pretty excited about those three schools when they come back to school. At Marshall, we had a lot of work going on. We took on a casework replacement, LED lighting replacement. As you can see in the left picture, it's surface-mounted lights. And if you look in the right-hand picture now, the ceiling looks flush. That's because of this new recessed LED lighting. And then, in the left picture, you can see all the old casework painted green, and it's been painted white, beige, green through the years. But in your right picture, you'll see the new hardwood casework. Hopefully, we'll get another 50 years out of this grade and level of casework that we've installed. Next is Todd Stadium. As you know, we've had some problems with the lighting, and people complaining about the light levels out at Todd Stadium. So a picture on the left shows just how bright the LED lighting is out at Todd Stadium now. If you look at the picture on your right, you can see three poles. The center pole, we took a picture of, so you could compare the LED lighting to the old Lincoln Descent lighting. And here are sneeze guards. Carpenter Shop has, I believe, about got every school equipped with sneeze guards as needed. I put a red border around the picture on the left, so you could see where they are. If it wasn't for the red border and the little piece of wood on both sides for the mounting hold-down bracket, you wouldn't even hardly be able to tell they're on the counter. Like I said, I think we've got all the schools done at this time, and now are working on the support sites, admin building, staff support, HR, and technology, and places like that, that have to deal with customers and visitors coming into the building. And so, I believe that's the last slide. Is there any questions?
All right, any questions? Online, any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'd like to introduce Chris Jenkins. He's Director of Technology.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the Board, and Dr. Parker. I'm going to talk a little loud because I got some feedback from the folks at home that they're having trouble hearing the speakers at the podium. So forgive me if it seems like I'm shouting at you. I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes this evening talking with you about some of the work that we've done in the Technology Department to get us ready for this virtual start to school. As we prepare for a virtual start, I think we all agree that one of the most important things that students are going to need in order to be successful at online learning is to have a reliable computer that they can use, both to do their coursework and to collaborate and communicate with their teachers and other instructional staff. So, we got an early start this year and started distributing our Chromebooks to our high school students last Monday, August 10. And we issued over 3,600 Chromebooks to students during the last week. That number seems a little bit low to you. Keep in mind that our Denby High School, Heritage High School, and Achievable Dream High School, those students already had one-to-one Chromebooks. So it was just the rising ninth graders from those schools that came in last week to get their devices. We started issuing Chromebooks to our middle school students this week, and we expect to deliver as many as 5,000 devices during this week. You may remember, when we talk about our elementary school Chromebooks, that they won't, the new ones won't arrive until sometime in December. But as part of our Return to Learn intent form, we've asked our elementary school families if they need a loner device for their student. And as of today, around noon, we've had 3,300 requests for loner devices for our elementary school families. And we'll start issuing those devices in partnership with our elementary school leadership teams on August 24, and that'll run through August 31. And then, that last week, prior to the start of school, that's where we'll be reaching out and trying to reconnect with any families that we missed and provide some additional after-hours and weekend opportunities for working families to come in and make sure that every student has a device to come, a chance to come in and pick up a device. And then, lastly, I don't want to leave off our pre-K students. We are working in conjunction with our partners in the Federal Programs Department to fund and purchase an iPad with built-in Wi-Fi connectivity for every one of our pre-K students. We will not have those for the start of school. But again, just like we're doing with the elementary schools, we will have loners available for our pre-K students. I think probably maybe right behind Chromebooks, the next most important thing for a student to have in order to succeed is going to be a connection to the Internet. And we've, I've talked to you before about some of the data from the city and the state, and we believe around 20% of our families may not have reliable access to the Internet at home. With that in mind, we've launched our Connected at Home program. We launched it last Wednesday. And what we're doing is providing Wi-Fi hotspots to our eligible families. So far, as of today, again, around noon, we've received about 400 applications, and we expect that number to go up as we continue to market and promote it and work with our school leadership teams to get the word out about this great program. And of course, I don't want to wrap up without telling you about all the work that we've been doing with our teachers to help prepare them to be successful at virtual learning this fall. And because the Canvas Learning Management System is new to most of us, the bulk of our work this summer has been around preparing our teachers to use this system. So we've offered a couple of different ways for them to get exposure to it. We did some webinars, and these are ongoing, on Canvas fundamentals. And these sessions are intended, they're foundational knowledge. They're really meant to, they're virtual Zoom meetings, webinars that are held with the ITCs, and they're really meant to help get folks familiar with the system. And the session topics include things like how to navigate, how to build a course, the kind of basics. And then, we also have, within the Canvas system, we have a self-paced course for teachers called N N P S: Growing with Canvas. And Growing with Canvas builds on the fundamentals that they learn in the webinars, and it provides additional opportunities for them to practice. And each one of the teachers is going to complete this course. It is mandatory, and they will receive recertification points once they complete it. And then, we've also got some ITCs leading Canvas work sessions with the teachers in their individual schools. All of these are being delivered virtually through Zoom. And again, the purpose of these sessions is to work, be able to work one-on-one with an ITC and help them apply what they're learning in both the webinars and in the self-paced course through Canvas. And then, lastly, for our new teachers, we have a course that we've created in Canvas, a self-paced PD course for our new teachers, and it teaches them things about just the basics on how to navigate all of the technology at Newport News Public Schools, things like navigating our websites, accessing accounts, how to get into the student information system, how to use the email system, and those kind of basic technologies, and how to use their classroom technology as well. So, at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the technology slides I've presented.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions from folks online?
No, thank you.
Okay, so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Mary Lou Rousseau. She's our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Support Services, and she's going to share some information with you regarding meal services.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Parker. I'd like to talk about two things this evening with you, just briefly. The first of which is our Child Nutrition Program and what's going on with that, and what we've been doing this summer. As you know, after school closed in March, our Child Nutrition staff began feeding our students. At the time, we were using nine schools and 19 mobile sites. So we were feeding from 28 sites. Over the course of the spring and summer, we've served 400,000 breakfast and lunch meals to our students. And you recall that we did partner with the World Central Kitchen for a while to serve dinner as well. Our Child Nutrition staff hasn't done this alone. Our transportation staff has helped, as has our security staff. And we just want to say a big thanks to everyone who's been involved in our feeding program, making sure that our students were able to eat. We do have some changes lined up for our program in the fall. We will be feeding from almost all of our schools, 32 of our schools to be exact, and we still plan to have seven mobile sites. So while we had 28 sites in the spring and summer, we'll be having 39 sites. Hopefully, a few more sites will help parents find a site closer to them. We will be serving breakfast, lunch, a snack, and supper for every day, Monday through Friday. But we're going to serve Monday through Thursday and have two meals, two days of meals picked up on Thursday. You can see that our feeding time is changing from the middle of the day to the end of the day, 4:30 to 5:30, so that hopefully that'll be more convenient for parents that are working, and they'll be able to get by more easily. Parents will have to have their student ID number with them in order to pick up a meal. So we're going to ask them to provide that to us. Students that are attending our childcare programs will also be given meals. And for those parents that want to follow what's available in terms of menu, those will be posted on the website monthly. In terms of childcare, we are still working out the details of that with our community partners. We've been having conversations with City Parks and Rec, you know, that they've always provided before and after-school daycare for our kids. We're talking with the Y M C A and also with the Boys and Girls Clubs. We are, at the moment, expecting that we will have programs located at some of our schools, as well as the rec centers, Midtown and Denby, and some of the Boys and Girls Clubs. In each case, our partners are working with us to provide a remote learning at the site. Our kids will, of course, all have their Chromebooks, and so they'll be able to take those with them and be supervised with remote learning. We will be providing the breakfast, lunch, snack, and dinner that we're providing to parents who pick those up, two kids at school. And we are still working out the details, but the ages that are going to be served at each program, the hours that they'll be available, and the cost will vary by program, and working to get those details out just as soon as possible, perhaps later this week, or certainly by the beginning of next week. And registrations will be able to start at that time. So next on the agenda is our Chief of Staff, Rashard Wright, to talk about school leadership and what they're doing.
Mr. Wright, let's see if they have any questions for Mrs. Rousseau before she, before you step in.
I have one.
Yes. Dr. Best?
Could you tell me for the student ID that they have to provide for the meals, ID number, will they be able to just tell you, or do they need some documentation?
No, they won't need documentation. They'll need to provide that to us, Dr. Best.
So they can just tell you?
And Mr. Wright has assured us that kids know their number. And Mr. Wright has a sort of, that kids know their numbers pretty well. The numbers are also available for parents in ParentView, so it's a, it's a number that the kids, you know, have, you're familiar with the numbers, so we'll just need them to provide it to us, no documentation, but they'll need to give us the child's name and their number.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you, Ms. Rosso. I believe Chief of Staff Wright, you're up next.
Thank you, Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, School Board members, and Dr. Parker, and as a follow-up to that, Dr. Best, if needed, we will be able to print out a copy of that ID and maybe put it on cardstock and then get that delivered to families if we need to. So whatever we need to do to make sure our children can identify themselves, we will do, okay? At this time, I'll give a school, school leadership update. As you know, our schools and offices are open this week, Monday through Thursday. Starting next week, all schools will be open Monday through Friday. Families can register students and sign up for parent, their ParentView account, so we've been busy doing that this week also. With regards to our Return to Learn Intent Form, as we've shared with our families, learning for all students will be conducted virtually for the first nine weeks. To support our family needs, we've asked them to complete the Return to Learn Family Intent Form by way of ParentView. To inform us if they would prefer virtual learning for the entire semester, which would be up until, and which would also be November 4th through the 27th after we start the school year, if they have an elementary student that needs a Chromebook and what their childcare needs may be. The form must be completed for each child. We encourage all families to complete this important form by tomorrow, 11:59 PM. If families do not have a ParentView account, they're encouraged to contact their child's school. And our leaders are working very hard to ensure that they're available. We've also had conversations about ensuring they were answered on phones. We have obviously sites, our school sites passing our Chromebooks, so we're very busy, and we want to thank the Technology Department and others for helping us with that. With regards to elementary school, back to, back to school night kickoff, which you know is important, we want to prepare our young people for an exciting, exciting new, new school year. Teachers and staff from every elementary school will welcome our students and families in a drive-through style celebration to pick up virtual learning resources the week of August 31st through September 4th. Schools will host a virtual back-to-school night on Thursday, September 3rd. Our school principals will communicate all the exciting details with our families individually from the schools, and of course, that'll be communicated on our website through Twitter, Instagram, and the other accounts. For secondary, families will be able to drive by and receive, is that my time? And receive sixth-grade swag bags with school wristbands, goodies, and informational packets. Our sixth graders will also pick up their Chromebooks during this time. Additionally, during that week, there will be several virtual sessions to include a series of live parent Zoom sessions, and one entitled Middle School 101, which is a virtual tour for students, and they also have a panel discussion, feature current middle school students from each school, so we really want to make this exciting and engaging. High school will kick off freshman spirit week on September 1st with a Welcome to High School car parade, where students will pick up ninth-grade swag bags with school paraphernalia, wristbands, and information about high school. During this week, high school students will host a virtual tour for students, panel discussions with student leaders, and a variety of other spirit activities for our freshmen. Okay, so student schedules will be available in ParentView and StudentView on Wednesday, September 2nd, and again, our folks are working really hard to ensure that we can get that information out to our parents and our students, and we would not be able to do this without the hard work of many departments, so I really want to thank everyone for their hard work. So at this time, if you have any questions for me, I will answer those before I turn it over to Mrs. Stephanie Hartz, our Directive Human Resources, for a staffing update.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, we'll go online here, Ms. Searls Law?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Wright, just to go back to the intent form that is due tomorrow, I have had quite a few inquiries about that intent form, wanting to know if families will be able to change their intent after filling out the form based on the progression of COVID.
Vice Chair Searls Law, this is a decision that we will really have to work as a team to communicate to our community. As of right now, it's really key for us to get a accurate gauge of our students that are committed to the first nine weeks and our students that are committed to the first semester. At some point, you know, as a board and as a school division, we will decide with regional support and feedback and state support and feedback, what the second nine weeks will look like, and then we can work hard, by way of Dr. Parker, our superintendent and team, to communicate what that process, Mrs. Searls Law, will look like when it comes to changing, and how does that impact the student's schedule, how does that impact their previous decision, and also our capacity to serve our students. So at this time, I would have to say that we have not communicated that decision yet, but we will work very hard to get that out as soon as possible. We want to do what's best for our students and our community and our teachers also.
So a simple-
Thank you, yes. Lots of moving parts on that, thank you so much.
So a simpler translation of that would be that, right now, we know that, that we would like to accommodate all requests to change from a semester to a face-to-face, but we can't guarantee that there will be space availability in classes, class size will drive that. So if there is room, once a parent chooses the semester option, we're going to fill our schedule up and put kids in classes. When we get back to, moving back to in-class instruction, if a parent wants to switch back, while we will be able to accommodate as, as best possible, space availability will be determined also to determine whether there's room in seats, because we can't overload classes at that time to accommodate that request. So the answer right now would be that we cannot give you a clear answer that we would be able to accommodate every parent or student who wants to switch back from a semester to a, to a face-to-face class once we return to, to classes. It will probably be determined by the availability of classroom space and the availability of the, the ability to accommodate their class schedule. So that will be, that's the, the choice that's being made right now when a parent chooses that semester option. Just remember that if you change your mind, there will be factors that will determine whether we can accommodate a change of, a change of schedule.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Best.
Mr. Wright, how is the rate looking for the return rate for the intent to return forms, and then let's say if you get 60% back, tell me how that's going to work as opposed to 80%, like?
Well, ironically, I want to thank Chris Jenkins, he sent that data earlier today, so I'm going to ask him to come up and talk a little bit about what we've been able to gather so far, and then we'll work on that second part of the question.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Best. So I'm going to do my best to explain. We have, as I pulled the, I had, our team pulled the numbers for us today around lunchtime, and we had received about 8,000 responses to, that's 8,000 family, or 8,000 students that we've received responses for. So that, you know, about 27, 28% of our total student population. To give you some idea of what other large school districts are experiencing, Loudoun County and Northern Virginia started this process, they used the exact same system we do, and they promoted it heavily, and their final response rate was 50%. So 50%, I think, and, and we're seeing, hearing that from other school districts that have used the same process. So 50% would be a good number for us to get to. I think we've got some more work to do. So what happens next is if a family does not give us their intent, if they don't fill out the form, then we will automatically default them into the night, the first nine weeks of virtual learning. So, but there are, there's, first of all, there is still time for families to respond. If they're having trouble with ParentView, they can call, contact their school. We have, if, if somebody doesn't want to sign up for ParentView, you know, we do have the option for them, they can call into the school, and there are people in the school offices who have been trained on the system, who can take the information over the phone, verify that the parent is authorized to make decisions on behalf of that child, and enter the information directly into the system. So we are going to work as much as we can to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard and have their intent recorded in the system.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr., Ms. Amon?
I have a couple, so I'll let you guys talk to whichever one you want to. The, regarding the school schedules, so is the email that we received from middle school about the student's schedule this week, is that still sort of the generic hypothetical summary schedule versus what a student's actual hours and classes might be?
I think that's coming up in the, in the few, next presentation with our Chief Academic Officer.
We're going to break that down for you. We were anticipating that question, so we're prepared.
Great, great, thank you. And then on the ParentView, one question for clarification, because I've had some questions that childcare questions are, do you need childcare? And a secondary question where you can actually select, we've already secured childcare. Is that for sort of counting purposes, so we know who's having to get childcare versus how many we might need to help? And then I, if, I think it, to your point about if people are having trouble with ParentView, I personally had trouble with it, sort of timing me out and not accepting my responses, I think I got it, but I think it's really great to suggest that if parents do have trouble, to call or call the school and get that message out in case they run into glitches.
Provide a reminder about that tomorrow. It's a big day for us tomorrow with the intent form, so our schools will be reaching out.
Chris, do you want to take that intent form, because I know we, I know we had a good debate going on about that, that question about childcare.
So the question about childcare really was for the purposes of helping our community partners who are providing childcare, and we, the reason we did it in two parts was exactly as you said, we wanted to get an idea for overall in the community, what are the needs for childcare? And then, but we also wanted to be able to shorten that down to, to the folks who have a need that's as of yet unresolved. So we broke it into two parts and said, do you need it? And if you do need it, do you already have it? And so we'll be able to share some of that data with the board at a, at a future meeting about what we, about what, what came out of that, but that was the point of that.
Further questions? All right, let's ask one more question on this same topic, if we could go back to, just because I want to clarify for the public, the intent form, if we go back to that slide. And so by tomorrow, we're looking to have parents complete the intent form, and just to, to reiterate again, the purpose of the intent form is the declaration of my second, my posture for the second nine weeks or for the first nine weeks?
It's to, it's to let, you're defaulted to, you know, the first nine weeks if you don't respond, but it's absolutely letting us know if you would like to request the entire semester.
Okay, so the, the intent form, the purpose of the intent form is to allow me as a parent to say that I would like to have my child online, virtual learning for the entire semester?
Yes, sir.
And so tomorrow is the deadline to make that declaration. Now, if I decide that I want to, after, after the deadline tomorrow, if I still decide that I would like to have my child stay home, virtual, virtual learn for the whole semester, what are the, what are the options, or are we, are we looking at that or discussing that? Yeah?
We, we, we obviously can accommodate more students in a virtual environment than we can face-to-face instruction, so I do not believe that we will have a, have issues with moving some students to a virtual for the full semester. The problem that we run into is the later we go into the year, they've already met that teacher of record, they've already started their course of study with that class, so shifting to, to another, shifting, changing to a full semester may change one, the teacher, the pacing of the class, there are some instructional pieces that will go into place there as well. So we're encouraging everyone to complete the intent form by, by tomorrow. If we have requests at a later time, like new enrollments and those types of things, we, we feel we can accommodate more students virtually than we can, than in a face-to-face classroom, so I don't, I don't feel that it will be a problem with accommodating a schedule.
Right, and that's largely what I wanted to touch on, the scarcity of resources, in this case, it's more of the face-to-face instruction, and opting for the virtual learning is, is, is easier to do with the intent form than our-
We could just plan right now to get our, we need to get, if a student needs a schedule, we need to know what classroom they will be in, and this intent form allows us to put them in a class that will meet virtually for the entire semester, or we'll know whether that class needs to be a class that could be scheduled back to a hybrid model at a later time. So that's really the important piece, is getting the schedules, getting kids in the appropriate classes with the right instruct, instructors, so, so we can get the school year up and running.
Right.
And again, schedules, we want those schedules to go out by September 2nd, so we can't delay this process. This, these are, these are processes that will be taking place normally in the middle of July or, or in June, we will be working on schedules and getting our kids into classes. So because of this start that we're having, we are really pushing every day to the limit to try to get our students' schedule for classes, to get schedules out on time, and get our teachers prepared to teach.
And as a procrastinator parent, if I miss this deadline, then the, the automation of the system will push me over into the virtual-
For the first nine weeks.
That'll be the default position if I procrastinate, so if I want in-person instruction, then I need to get to this intent form-
Correct.
-and fill it out before tomorrow. Okay, okay, just wanted to make that clarification. All right, thank you.
Next, we'll have Stephanie Hartz, our Directive Human Resources, to give us an update on staffing.
Good evening, everyone. What an interesting summer in the Human Resources Department, that's all I can say. We are, what I'm going to do tonight is kind of give you an update on where we are at teachers. I usually also tell you about bus drivers, but right now, we'll hold off till later when we need them. So I'll give you update on teachers and then a couple of things that we've been talking about regarding staff in terms of plans, share a couple of things with, with you and the public as well. So if you want to go ahead and advance me, please, Michelle, that'd be great. All right, at this point, this summer, we have hired 215 teachers, classroom teachers is normally what I report to you, so this is the individuals who have a responsibility for a classroom of, of students. At this point, that represents 98% of our total teaching staff, and although, Ms. Brown, we've been a little bit higher, not much last year at this time, we still have very much a lot of moving parts, and as somebody mentioned that earlier. There's a lot going on, a lot of shifting, a lot of what we were just talking about with the intent for our students is going to drive a lot in terms of assignments and what our teachers will be doing as we go into the first nine weeks in the semester. So that's where we are with teachers. A couple of things, I know one of the questions that we've gotten since the last time we were together is a question that a lot of teachers have, is can they come in and actually teach virtually from their classroom? We've had a lot of, of interest in that, you know, you may have heard the news, kind of, school divisions have made all kinds of decisions in terms of, of that particular question. And so where we are with that question is the answer is yes, teachers can. If they'd like to come in and teach from their classrooms virtually, they can. We're not requiring it, but they can. Right now, our principals are actually currently communicating with their staff to identify who wants to do that, because they do have to make some operational plans, you know, about who's going to be in the building and make sure cleaning schedules and things like that are all set up, and so they're prepared for who will be in the buildings day-to-day. So they are working on that right now. Keep in mind, as a principal, it may be important at times that I do have some of my teachers come in and work in person for some days, because it may be, we need to do some instructional coaching with them. A good example, we had all of our new teachers start yesterday, and so, you know, it's a group that we're very concerned about and that will need, you know, always need the extra help as they get started, and so a lot of them may be coming in and working with their principals and other instructional coaching staff, and that may be done better in person. So principals will work individually with staff who that's necessary, and we'll have them come in when it's needed to, to happen. Okay? Just as a reminder, because this has come up, our policies do not allow our staff, however, to bring their children to work, so that is something that we will continue to do. It's a safety issue, and so that will certainly be the case, and you've heard a lot about some of the options we'll have for our staff as well as our families around childcare as we move forward. The other question, of course, is now that we've made the decision to go virtually, it's as far as instruction for our students for this first nine weeks, what about the other half of our staff, our support staff? We have about half of our staff that are not in the classrooms, and so what is, what are they going to do for this first nine weeks? And so our plans at this point are that our, our support staff will be either working in their regular assignment, coming in the regular in-person to the building, working at their job or working at their location, or- at their job or working at their location, or they may be temporarily reassigned to another role for this nine weeks. So, we are gonna have some needs in our childcare facilities that we're gonna have, you know, in our buildings. And so, a really good idea is to have some of our support staff work with the kids as they're trying to go through their day virtually, because they know the, know the school division, know kids, have worked with kids on a regular basis. So, that might be an example of a reassignment. And so, we have a whole list of all kinds of other things that staff may be temporarily assigned during this time period where we're virtually working. We are working on that plan, should finalize that here in the next couple of days. In terms of staff, they will be notified by their department leadership about any possible reassignments of, of their work assignment, you know, prior to their actual start date. In the next two to three weeks, we have different start dates for different groups of support staff coming up all the way until the first day of school. And so, based on when they're scheduled to start, their leadership will contact them if they need to report to anywhere other than their normal worksite. Okay? So, that's kind of a little update on the HR world. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Bass.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Two, for staff PPE, for the people that are required, the office staff, administrators, will things be provided by the division? And are they being provided now? Or, and then also for teachers that choose to come in and to instruct from their classrooms, are they responsible for their mask? And, and what are their requirements? If you, when you step across the door, are you expected to have a mask on, to keep that on all day? When you go into the office to talk with staff, should you have on a mask? They're getting all the information like that. And then, if you have staff members that are not following the proper procedure, what is the reporting process? Because, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. To go through that, first of all, we'll start with masks. We are under an order for everyone to wear masks in, in any kind of public domain. And so, our staff right now are supposed to bring their own mask, because that's what the, the order is across the state at this point. We do, of course, have masks, so if somebody in my office who's working right now forgets theirs in the morning, we have some spares and, you know, certainly you're gonna work with people. Or if it takes someone a little while time to, to be able to, to secure one that's their personal, you know, cloth mask that they can wash and keep up with, then we'll certainly work with that again till they can, can get that. Other additional PPE that might be required, face shields, you know, our nurses will be in gowns and things like that. Any of those additional things, we are providing those from the school division. And of course, our custodial staff is, is with all the cleaning materials and all of that, taking care of that piece of it. So, really for our staff right now, it's, it's just the mask.
And they should be wearing them.
And yes, they should be bringing those. As far as requirements, we're following the social distancing guidelines. So, you, you wear your mask when you cannot maintain that six-foot different, distance. Give you an example, in my office, you know, most of my staff has an office where they can close their door and work, and so, that's very convenient, they can close the door. Teachers will be able to do that in their classrooms. If they're coming to work in their classroom, they'll be able to go in their classroom, close the door and work without their mask. However, when you go into hallways and other offices there where there's gonna be other people and you could run into someone that you can't maintain that six-foot distance, you're expected to have your mask with you and to wear that. As we, we, you know, move around this building, you know, we wear our mask in the hallway, because you never know who you're gonna meet around the corner, you know? So, you wanna make sure that you're maintaining that six-feet distance. So, that's the, kind of the way we've been working with that. All of those rules have been shared with staff, so we have an outline of what the, the social distancing requirements are, and they have been shared with all staff who have started working at this point. And as more staff come in, they will be trained on what those are, what the expectations are. And of course, with any other, you know, person, managing performance of staff, this would be an issue that if, if there's not compliance, then that will have to be addressed by a supervisor or manager. And staff is certainly encouraged to share with their supervisor if they have concerns about, you know, any of that not being followed in their department or in their area.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All right, well, thank you so much for the, for the report. 98% in a, in a teacher shortage is nothing to laugh at. That is really fantastic, and congratulations to, to your team.
Thank you very much. Well, Dr. Shabika Gerald is next on our list, so she's the Director of Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations, and I think she has some assessment information to share with you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Searl's Law, Board members and Dr. Parker. I'm here tonight to provide you with a brief update on assessments and accreditation for 2021 and beyond. Thank you. I'm gonna take you back just a little bit. On March 23rd, all Virginia schools were immediately closed for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year to mitigate the spread of coronavirus. This closure took place prior to the administration of the 2020 Spring SOL Assessments. On March 30th, the United States Department of Education announced the approval of cancellation of federal SOL Band-Aids. With the approval of State Secretary of Education, Dr. James Lane, the Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, announced on April 24th, the cancellation of standards of learning testing, and that all schools will receive the designation of accreditation waived for the 2020-2021 school year. Subsequently, on August 4th, Dr. Lane exercised emergency authority granted to him by the 2020 General Assembly to waive annual school accreditation for the 2021-2022 school year based on data from the 2020-2021 school year. The accreditation waiver recognizes that indicators based on data from the 2020-2021 school year may not be an accurate reflection of school quality or improvement, and does not imply that assessments will not take place during the upcoming school year. The decision to waive the accreditation standards is due in part to the fact, without spring 20 assessments, assessment information, there will be insufficient data to calculate growth in reading and mathematics. These growth measures are essential to discerning our progress in serving all students. In addition to waiving accreditation for 2122, this will allow schools to focus on assessing the impact of the school closures on student learning, both academically and socially emotionally. It should be noted that barring federal waiver, VDOE expects all divisions to administer SOL assessments in the spring of 2021. These assessments will establish a baseline for growth measures in 2022-2023 school year. This includes performance-based assessments for grades three Science and Social Studies and performance assessments in fifth grade Writing. In order to provide our instructional team with the information necessary to measure, measure and monitor student progress, Dr. Parker has requested the formation of the Assessment Subcommittee. Members of the Teaching and Learning and School Leadership Teams are working collaboratively to develop an assessment plan that provides baseline data related to learning while keeping in mind the social-emotional needs of our entire school community. Our current focus is assessments during the first marking period, and will shift to first semester, third marking period, and finally into semester two. The goal of the Assessment Subcommittee is to develop an assessment calendar for 2021 that aligns with the guidance from Virginia Department of Education and Recover, Restart, Redesign Document, and inventory our current instructional support resources. In addition, the committee is working to identify critical assessments that will allow NMPS to measure, measure, monitor, and support student growth. The mask, the glasses, I'm sorry. This work has been exciting and will be transformative for our school division. I wanna say thank you to the members of the Assessment Subcommittee for your continuous work and commitment to our students. As information regarding assessments and accountability is updated, we will be sure to keep you informed of its impact on Newport News Public Schools. The resources used by the committee have been linked in the presentation and provide essential information related to required assessments. If there are any questions, suggestions, or feedback after this presentation, please do not hesitate to contact the Department of Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to accept your questions at this time.
Questions? Any questions online?
Nope.
No, thank you.
All right. Well, I'll ask one question, which is in regards to...
My time's up too, sorry, gotta go.
Just one question in regards to, I saw on there SAT ACT, some other kind of high school types of assessments. What are we doing for assessing the middle and elementary school? Or, or have we decided yet what all the measures are going to be for assessing progress from last year to this year?
That, that's currently the work of the Assessment Subcommittee, so we're working with the curriculum team, Teaching and Learning, Dr. Jones, Dr. Manglamott, Dr. Mitchell for Special, Special Education Services and Student Advancement and English as a Second Language. So, we have all of those people on the committee to develop some strong measures that we'll be able to continue to monitor over time.
And is it a possibility that some of these measures may, if we find that they work for us, they may live, they may live on past this year?
That's the goal.
Yeah, okay, great. Wonderful. All right, any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Dr. Tina Manglamott, our Chief Academic Officer.
Why do I have to go after the tallest person in the room? I really think that's not fair. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Searl's Law, and members of the board, Dr. Parker. It's a pleasure being here this evening. I want to start by thanking all of you for giving me the privilege to serve as the Chief Academic Officer in Newport News. For far too long, I have served on the outside, looking in. So, I'm a parent of, of a product of Newport News Schools. I am a community member of Newport News, and I was also a employee of the Department of Education, where I got to experience firsthand the exceptional teaching of our educators and the dedication of our educational leaders. And I am just tickled pink to be on the inside now, helping move the work forward. So, thank you, guys. I have served in public education for about 22 years now, and I've served in all kinds of capacities, and I'm not gonna list them all. You know, first, starting as a secondary science teacher, I was a technology lead in a school, a building administrator, central office administrator, and of course, at my latest roles, the Department of Education, the Director of Innovation and STEM. But most importantly, I have worked very intimately with hybrid learning and online learning, and I've been doing that since 2002. So, I have developed and taught online classes. I just taught this past summer. Love teaching, won't ever give it up. And I've been a Division Virtual Academy Supervisor, and I led Virtual Virginia Program from the state level. So, it truly is a privilege to be able to speak to you tonight on something that I have a vast experience in. But I'm going to preface that I also have an extreme passion for it. So, if I am long-winded, please feel free to tell me to hurry up and boo me off the podium, and I will gladly move away. So, as we move into fall, we know that our students are going fully virtual. And this instructional model has truly been implemented since the 1980s, and lots of people don't understand or even realize that, right? The model is employing digital technology, and what that does is it strengthens a student's learning experience, but it also, research shows, improves educational outcomes when implemented with fidelity. And that's important to know. While many believe virtual learning is a computer teaching students, it, the heart of it is truly the teacher behind that screen. And they are leading the work. Teachers facilitate the learning by designing the instructional pathway for students. And these activities empower our students, and they also allow them to take ownership of their own learning by helping them make meaning of the content and apply it in authentic, real ways. Teachers have to utilize what's called a learning management system, or what we call an LMS, in order to do this. The LMS houses the instructional content and provides the tools necessary for the teacher to communicate effectively, whether it's asynchronously or synchronously with students. In Newport News and in the state of Virginia, we are using Canvas as the LMS. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because we use those two terms interchangeably, LMS and Canvas. So, it's important to know that they're one of the same. Canvas is like the Levi of the jean, right? Teachers are going to use this platform in many different ways, but the most important way that they use it is they gather data from the assessment systems that are going to help them personalize instruction for their students. Whether it's allowing them to move into small groups, personalizing for one-on-one, or just kind of designing the instruction for the whole group. There is a wide variety of collaboration and communication tools that really help our teachers build those really important relationships with their students and build those safe and trusting relationships that are essential for learning to take place. It also encourages peer-to-peer collaboration, which we know is an extremely important skillset that we see valuable for the Newport News profile of a learner. There are lots of tracking systems in the LMS. Those tracking systems are going to allow us to take attendance and see which students are engaged in the learning and which ones need a little bit more extra push. It allows us to track learner progress, and of course, it allows our students to track assignments and due dates very, very easily, and I'll have the opportunity to show you So, I think it's really important to just touch on what, a little bit of what our Director of Technology, Chris Jenkins, touched on before, which is that teacher professional learning. So, the Canvas learning management system is, it's new to teachers. There's lots of little nuances and bells and whistles that our teachers have to learn. So, our technology team has worked effortlessly, or tirelessly, I should say, to develop what's called the Canvas Skills Progression. And there are different tiers to this professional learning. Level one is the most critical that teachers need to know in order to successfully teach their students online. Then there's tier two and tier three. We are happy to announce that 100% of our teachers will have been trained and at mastery by the end of September 2020.
Awesome.
So, we know that their virtual approaches to learning afford learners both synchronous and asynchronous modalities for learning. And those are two terms that sometimes get, people get confused with. The asynchronous modality really allows our students to work on their learning at their own pace, at their own place, and at their own time. The teacher is the architect, and I love using that term, because it's not just pulling a lesson plan. They are truly designing the pathway for their students. And that pathway is really what's gonna get our students to master the content and really learn it and be able to dive in a little bit more deeply into the content. Some examples include, they can watch videos. Those videos can be teacher-created. Those videos can be something from Discovery Education or from E-Media Virginia. They can have reading assignments, whether those reading assignments are from journals, primary sources, or whether the teacher types something in text and put it in the learning management system. There are simulations and interactions. Simulations like Explore Learning Gizmos we have here that embed mathematic manipulatives and scientific experiments that students can manipulate on their own to help them learn the content. We, journaling, student portfolios, individual and group projects exist in the online space. And then, of course, assessments, which are both formative, which means that I basically can have a check for understanding, or maybe more summative, which is really going to guide further instruction. Then you have synchronous learning, which is really what we know as our teacher, that, that direct instruction that we're used to. It's mainly teacher-centered, but the good thing is, it can be peer-centered too, which is really exciting. And it's, can be whole group, which a lot of us are used to hearing about, but synchronous can also be small group, and it can also be one-on-one instruction with our students. So, we spoke a little bit to schedules, and I wanna say that the schedules that we have right now are more generic in nature. And they're helping build our students' schedules, along with giving our teachers, students, and families a basic understanding and a structure that is needed for return to learn. Does not mean that our students will be online from 8:15 until 3:30, but it's giving that guidance that we know that math can occur during this time, and our teacher will give a synchronous type of instruction during that particular block. Schedules have the integration of asynchronous and synchronous learning embedded within them. And then, more detailed schedules will come out later. So, since virtual learning is very different from traditional face-to-face model all of us grew up with, learning how to teach online is much more than learning the nuances of a learning management system. So, we really have to look at what is effective online teaching practices. And so, our Director of Employee Development, Angela Rhett, is now working tirelessly with her team to develop a tiered, just-in-time approach to professional learning that is really focusing on effective online pedagogy. Really looking at, what do I need now? If I'm going to be an architect of the learning, what do I need to know right now? Then, what do I need to know in the future? Then what do I need to know in the future, what best practices to get me through the first few weeks? And then, of course, how do I teach to deeper learning? And that gets to group projects, it gets to journaling and portfolios and building stuff out just a little bit more deeply. So now that I've talked a little bit about that, I want to kind of show you what it looks like. This is the fun part, all right? So you guys are getting the first sneak peek at what this looks like. So up here is, we're going to look at it through a student lens, and right now, we are standstill, and he is a fourth grader at any elementary school in Newport News. And you can see here, he has a dashboard. And when he logs into Canvas, you can see on the left-hand side, he has his account, and you can see that little purple circle. And he can personalize his account. He can have an avatar. He can, you know, put up his own picture. He can put a picture of his dog if he wants to, but he gets the opportunity to personalize. His dashboard, he can also personalize as well. If I want to make my art class purple and not green, I can personalize that, and I can personalize the type of notifications that I want and the types of communication that I want to expose right there on that little icon. You can see that Mr. Stan has art with Mrs. Jones, homeroom with Mrs. Manglamott, music with Miss Page, and physical education and health and PE. On the left-hand side underneath that, underneath the dashboard, that's why, you see courses. So all you do is when you click on that, you'll see all your courses. Teachers will see everything that is actively published in their teaching schedule will be under courses as well. The calendar, to me, is the most exciting feature for students. So remember the agenda, and students lose their agenda. Okay, this is like an interactive, just dynamic schedule for students. So as a teacher, I can sit there and say that, you know what, Dr. Best, you are assigned this, and it goes immediately on her calendar underneath the course in which I'm teaching. So when she clicks on her calendar, she sees all of her work, all seven classes, five classes, how many they have, all there on the calendar. But then that's overwhelming for some students. So they can choose to say, you know what, I'm not working on biology today, I'm not going to work on geometry, but I'm a little behind in English IX. So they can deselect all the other courses, make sure that English IX is selected, and only see what is due for that upcoming week, or as far out as the teacher publishes it. They can also put to-dos on their own calendar and really personalize in that respect. There is an inbox that teachers can communicate with students, and students can communicate with each other. And the best part about it, it's video. So like this summer, I was teaching biology, and I would like send a message to my class. I just said, "Biology Summer Academy," and I hit my little video, wore my big sunglasses, a boa and a tiara, and I just introduced myself to the kids and the work that we were going to be doing today. You know, and it's just fun, and it motivates, and it engages, and it's another way that, as a student, like I had a student who was struggling, and they were an ESL student, and I would allow them to video themselves and give me their assignment instead of trying to type it out. So just another way to engage our students more meaningfully. In Canvas, there is an immersive reader, which will read to students, and it will allow you to pick a language as well. And I hear that the translation on Canvas is much more powerful than what we see in Google. If we go ahead and click to the next slide, I want to go ahead and show you just a short video, I promise brevity, and of what this looks like for students. I'm going to kind of talk through it. So Stan comes into his classroom, and he's looking at what he has, and he decides that, you know what, I'm going to go to homeroom today, and I'm going to see what's there. When he goes there, we have a homepage, and it says, "Welcome to Fourth Grade." There is a weekly calendar that has like colorful buttons for them, a star for learning resources, they can go back, and there are other resources there. Stan is then going to click on Monday, because supposedly, it's Monday. We're going to click on it, and it's going to take him to everything in his homeroom. And for this particular class, you see resource, you're going to see reading and writing, you'll see math, and you'll see science and social studies. So we're going to go ahead and click on science and social studies, and you'll see there that Stan's going to start off, "Do you know what planet you live on? Do you know what you're able to live on this planet?" And they can reply in a discussion thread and communicate with their peers. They go next, and they're posed with another deep question, and it talks a little bit about gas giants and terrestrial planets, and it shows a picture. Then they'll hit next, and there's going to be a little quiz, and we didn't videotape further than that because it was going to be too big. So they click next, and there's a one-question assessment that says, "What's the order of the planets?" And it gives them immediate feedback on whether they're right or wrong. Then they click next, and they go to a video on the planets, and then there's a little article they're going to read. And then the last activity is a Google Interactive Activity that the teacher will then grade and give feedback on. So as you see, we know there's apprehension around online learning, right? But we are not going into uncharted territory. Many have been before us, right? And times have changed, and the way that our students have learned have changed as well. And not because of a virus, because of technology, and because of the time. And so what we notice is our students have information right here at their fingertips. And so it's up to our educators to be able to activate that knowledge and to help them make sense of the information that they're getting every single day when they go online. And I think it's also, we're going into fall, but it's really a catalyst that's going to empower our students, and it's going to allow them to take ownership of when they learn, what they learn, and at the pace in which they learn it. All right, thank you. Do you guys have any questions, anything you want clarification on?
Mr. Ely.
I just want to say thank you for that amazing presentation. It was very informative to see the view of the children through their lens. One question I do have is, will there be training for maybe their elementary school for the parents to kind of navigate through this? Because I've got a couple of questions. My parents say, "I don't know how I'm going to manage to do this. I ain't been in school in over 20 or 30 years. I don't even know how to work a computer." So will it be some type of help or tutorial for parents to navigate through all these new technology pieces?
That's a good question. Now, you know I'm new. Actually, Thursday, we're meeting with the Digital Transformation Subcommittee, and that's on the agenda. And what I'd really like to do is create student orientation videos, but also parent orientation videos. And I think, and it's just in my head, no one yell at me, but I think it would be really great to show those videos at back-to-school, the virtual sessions, so our parents feel a little bit more comfortable, and our students feel more comfortable, and our teachers. So if I have a prerecorded video, then the teacher can either play it directly for the students and the parents, or they can watch it and then show what exactly is on that video. So we're going to talk on that on Thursday.
Thank you so much once again.
You're welcome.
Dr. Best.
Yes, I have a question as well. Can you tell me a little bit, maybe particular for Newport News or just in your experience, your years of experience, more, a little bit more about how the virtual learning works for K through 2, and what it looks like for K through 2?
Yeah, that's a great question.
What has it evolved into for K through 2?
Yeah, and I, you know, that, no one went into that space. K-12 Learning in Virginia has gone into that space, and what they do is they have parent as coaches. That's their model. So if you're going to homeschool and use online learning for a primary learner, you understand that as a parent, you have a coaching model. So what we're trying to do is develop schedules and have a structure so specific that it's very easy for parents to follow along and daycare providers. But there has to be some sort of coaching, because obviously, they just, they're not self-directed yet. So I hope that helps.
How does it look though? Has it evolved? Like, what has your experience been? What type of knowledge do you have of it? Like, if you've been doing it for 10 years or however many years, how, what has it evolved to? Or is there not much out there?
There is not much out there in the primary space. So it hasn't evolved. I will honestly say that most of our online learning has been through the secondary from sixth up. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't have blended learning. The hybrid model has taken place very successfully, pre-K all the way up through high school and beyond. But the fully virtual model, there's not much out there, that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Amon.
Two questions just to follow up to Dr. Best. So are we therefore sort of communicating with our children that we're trying to structure in a much more fashion for younger elementary? And then, the, what's the vision, since we may not have a lot, we haven't done this before, on, say, the K to 2, when the classes log in and we've got parents or caregivers mentoring or coaching through sort of the sample of the video conference with, say, 20 students? Is the vision that we'll have fewer students in the video? It could be a little chaotic with 20 students plus 20 caregivers.
That's wonderful. I just met with our elementary director today, Lori Wall, and they were planning whole-group instruction, and now they're breaking it up into half the class will have whole-group instruction, and the other half will have whole-group instruction at a different time. So you can work more independently with those learners. As far as the curriculum is concerned, we are in the midst, our instructional team is in the midst right now of creating exemplar modules for all K through 12, that particular space. We also have Virtual Virginia, which we are going to embed into our learning management systems that has content K through 12 already built in as well. The K through 8 is new, and from what I hear, it's not fully robust like that high school space just yet, but there's content in there, absolutely.
All right, other questions?
I just want to make one more extension to, that our parents have been asking. So if a parent is working during the day, or they're not able to coach their child, or they're learning from the home, but they come back in the evening and they're totally available, let's say, 5 to 7 o'clock, how could we accommodate any families that have those type of extenuating circumstances?
We're talking about that right now. Mainly, when I meet with students, I have the ability to record those sessions, and those recordings are available to anyone. So you may be there whole group, but I may want to watch it again later. Or I may be there with my daycare provider, but a parent wants to go back later and see it with their student. So that is available. I can speak personally that, just my own experience, I had many students who couldn't make my synchronous sessions, and I made it a point to meet with them later as well. So good instruction always takes place in that particular way.
Yes, Mr. Hunter.
This is on the whole back-to-school learning. So it's imperative that we get our students back. And so when nine weeks come, and the coronavirus is like this, right? Are we working on a plan that we can have some type of in-class learning for our students at all? You know, hypothetically, this is what I'm thinking. So in high school, typically, you have a cohort of students that take the same type of class. So maybe this class here, that they sit in one room, 15 of them, and maybe the teachers rotate, and not the students, right? I'm just thinking outside the box.
There are places that are setting up some hybrid models similar to that. Again, we mentioned various models for coming back to face-to-face instruction, but we also, for that parent who was speaking earlier tonight, we mentioned the importance of getting our most, our most neediest population of students, our pre-K, our early childhood learners, our special education and our KLL students, back to classroom instruction as soon as it's safe to do so, for those very, for those very reasons that Dr. Manglamott is mentioning right now. Because while we are doing, we'll do the best we can to provide in-home learning for those populations of our students, we know the best instruction that they'll need is some level of face-to-face instruction where we can be most impactful. So there will be, obviously, hopefully, you know, when we see the opportunity and know the metrics that will allow us to transition some of our students back to some level of face-to-face instruction, we know that we'll prioritize it in an appropriate way to make sure some of our most neediest learners are getting the instruction that they need in a classroom setting. But that was part of our hybrid plan, was to try to keep, minimize the student travel and to possibly keep cohorts of students together. So those were exactly some of the things we were thinking about if we did transition to a hybrid model at a later time.
All right, other questions?
All right, I'll ask one additional question in terms of the learning management system. Great view of the student lens, and we got to see through the students' eyes what their day sort of looks like in the courses and the calendar. Of course, as a parent, the thing that I'm honing in on is that calendar, so I want to know what's due when so that I can help to coach my child. What, can you just describe for us in terms of the parent's view of the learning management system? I have my own login, or I'm going to be looking over my child's shoulder? How is that going?
I'm going to allow Mr. Jenkins to come and speak to how they are setting it up right now, because I'm not aware of that yet.
I get to keep the iPad, too. So I'm going to speak, I have like a thimble full of knowledge on this, but there is a role in Canvas called the observer role. So the way I believe it's going to work, and I'll confirm this with our system administrator in the morning, but I believe that the parent will be able to log in with their own login that's tied to their child. So kind of like ParentView, you get an activation code that's linked to your child or your children. And then when you log in, you can see your children's work, you can see the assignments that are due. And then I'll also confirm that you're able to get that calendar view. But there is that observer role built into the system.
So that to come, you know, that parent, I'm not going to call it ParentView because that's another app to confuse, but that parent lens is to come, and we'll be maturing that in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, sir. And so when we put out this information for parents and we put out these videos, all of that will be included with instructions. And then, of course, just like everything we're doing, we'll have a call center that's open, we'll have live people able to take the calls and walk parents through if they're having trouble logging in, or if they're having trouble navigating the system.
Now, I know it's a challenge, I admit it's a challenging question even as I ask it, but the integration of Canvas and ParentView, StudentView, what I'm asking about essentially is, do I have to have two user IDs that I'm going to need to remember, two passwords? Or is there, are we looking at, or is there ways to integrate the applications together? So minimizing my...
So the systems are linked, and they do pass information back and forth. I'm not sure that we have the capability to sync, but to do like, what you're asking for is like a single sign-on.
Right.
But that's certainly something that we can look into. And again, I'll write all this down when I get back to my computer, and we'll get some answers for you, and we'll share those with the public as well.
Maybe something the vendor needs to create. Yeah, or, yes, can the vendor, yeah, create that for us, maybe?
Okay.
Dr. Manglamott, was that the final presenter, or is there someone following behind your presentation?
I was the final for Return to Learn.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Return to Learn presentation for this evening. We know it was rather lengthy, but as you can see, there's a lot of good work taking place with our staff. And I also want to give a very appreciative shout-out to those leaders in our division who have taken on the task of taking on various subcommittees that have allowed us to meet not only our principals, but also our, some of our stakeholders, like our teachers and other staff, in various roles associated with our Return to Learn planning. So thank you for the leadership in those areas as well, and that's allowing us to move our work forward in a more streamlined way.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Parker. So that will conclude Item 5.01, the Back-to-School Ready Report, and we'll move on to Item
And that will be Dr. Jones.
Good evening Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searl's Law, Board members, and Dr. Parker. The purpose of this presentation is to share the student fees schedule as a part of the board policy to inform the board and public of fees associated with certain courses When developing the schedule, when developing the fee schedule, there was alignment to the Newport News Strategic Plan Journey 2025. The goals related to student fees include student success, enhanced partnerships, and stewardship of resources. There was a committee that were involved in the student fee process. There was a collection of fee requests from schools and departments, collaboration with Departments of School Leadership, Curriculum and Development, and Finance, sharing with principals and supervisors for input, and revising and publishing the fee schedule on the Newport News website. Student fees are provided for each student in synergy. Parents can log in to review student fees for the year. Fees may be collected in two formats. They may be collected in person at your student's school or through the online Student Fund site. However, using the Student Fund site, there is a 4% service charge for using this feature. Fees are collected at the beginning of the year. Generally, students are able to use... Generally, students are able to use, that students are able to use virtually. However, some fees, as I will discuss in a few minutes, have been deferred until we return for in-person instruction. Equitable practices are integrated in all aspects of our strategic plan. Therefore, no student is denied resources or participation due to inability to pay. Additionally, service to our students and open communication with families enable staff to meet the needs of all students. Therefore, payment plans are optional if there is a family who has a financial need. The example provided is for visual and performing arts. Middle school art, theater, chorus and band and orchestra will pay fees at the beginning of the school year for semester and year-long courses. You can see the fees that are listed for these courses. This includes access to digital resources and site music that students will utilize in a virtual or in-person learning environment. At the high school level, many students have already picked up rental instruments for the school year. Middle school principals will arrange instrument pickup and communicate those dates with families. These fees are also listed. In band, choral and orchestra, uniform payments have been deferred until in-person instruction For career and technical education, all fees have been deferred until in-person instruction resumes. These fees include opportunities for hands-on labs, robotic kits, food and consumable materials. Other fees include behind-the-wheel drivers' education. We had 111 students to participate in behind-the-wheel drivers' education this summer while also maintaining safety guidelines. The next session of classes will begin on October the 8th. All costs for physical education courses will be deferred into returning for in-person instruction. A limited number of pre-K 12 textbooks, library books and supplies will not be used for virtual learning. However, when we do return, we will return to our regular fee collection schedule and that is prorated based on the use and cycle of the textbook, library book or calculators. Are there any questions?
All right, questions? Yes, Dr. Best.
Regarding fees such as band, I know you said you can pay it electronically or you can pay it in person. So now, does every school handle funds exactly the same way now?
It is my understanding that all schools are being trained to be able to receive online payments for students.
But even in person, is it, is it the same? We give it to the band director? Do we give it to the secretary in the office? Are those things the same in every school?
I do believe so, and I know the bookkeepers are also available to collect fees at each school. That would be the, the process now because the band teacher is not actually, the students are not actually coming to, to class to actually pay the band director. So they would be paid to the front office.
Okay.
Unless they opt for in-person or virtual payments.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
All right, well, one question from me is regarding, and it's more of a technology, again, technology question. As you mentioned that we can pay online.
Yep, we're good.
My Payments Plus app that we have had historically, how does that, yeah, how does that support this process? Is it related or are there, you know, two different systems in terms of, like we mentioned here, these are largely activity fees that are being charged to the students as opposed to the meal service fees? And I guess are those two different systems?
I'm not certain if it's two separate systems.
I was going to ask this question. Is that a Chris question or Mary Lou question?
I think it's a Mary Lou question.
Mary Lou question. Is Mrs. Rostos still on the line with us?
I'm on the line, Dr. Parker, but I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry, there's a lot of static in the line coming this way.
Mr. Brown will repeat the question.
Sure, yes, I'll repeat it, hopefully you hear me this time. I was asking about, there's the My Payments Plus app, which historically is associated with our meal payment, meal payments for students. And then there's this online student activity fee collection that we're hearing the presentation on, on here. And I was asking, are they, are the two different, are the two systems one in the same or are they two different systems? And then the follow-up question to that is, is there an effort underway to try to merge the systems into one?
Well, Mr. Brown, I heard a little bit of that. The My Payments Plus system for the child nutrition, you know, we are providing all of our meals now without charge to students. And so during the pandemic, that's been a huge help. But we do have another system that allows our parents to pay online or with the, with an electric, with a credit card, I'm sorry. And that is available to parents in most schools. We let the schools opt whether our parents would do it. I can get some information to the board about which schools have opted to do it and which schools have not, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, so thank you. That would be, that would be helpful to, to get that.
And, and Mary Lou, so is there a need for that other system now that we are not charging students or do we still have that system available for, for use in any other capacity? I just want to make sure.
Well, there still are some like à la carte, when, when kids are at school, there still are some à la carte fees, I suppose.
On that Snickers bar, yeah.
My Payments Plus, but it's, it's much less useful than it used to be since most kids eat for free.
Thank you.
All kids eat for free, most of what they eat.
All right, so that concludes our report on 5.02, Student Fees, which moves us on to 5.03, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, always a favorite at this time of the year. This gets us, we know it's back-to-school time when we see the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searl Swall, School Board, Dr. Parker. As you know, each year I come before you to discuss proposed revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. As a reminder, our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is a tool that helps us in our mission to ensure all students graduate citizen-ready. It provides guidance for our students, our families and our staff and details the many options we have available to us as we address student conduct. There are several phases to our revision process. After reviewing guidelines and recommendations, we begin to gather stakeholder feedback from multiple groups. Finally, our proposals are reviewed by senior staff. This year, there were five pieces of legislation passed by the 2020 Virginia General Assembly and signed by the governor that will impact the implementation of the Model Guidance for Positive and Preventative Code of Conduct and Alternatives to Suspension, which is the book our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is derived from. Three of these revisions would be addressed this evening. The first of the revisions involves makeup work. In addition to the current makeup work policy, the new law requires that rather than simply supplying a suspended student with alternative assignments used to reinforce concepts, students receive the exact work that they would have had access to if they were not suspended and requires that that work be graded. Also, the General Assembly, in continuation of their efforts to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline, has adjusted the standard for mandatory reporting to law enforcement. Rather than requiring principals to contact the SRO for a blanket category of offenses which are explicitly stated in the Code of Virginia, each individual incident is to be reviewed so that certain acts that may constitute a misdemeanor offense are not reported. If the incident is reported to the SRO, parents are now required to be given notice. In keeping with the practices of neighboring school systems and after consultation with our legal counsel, principals are, will now defer to the Office of Student Discipline prior to contacting law enforcement. The VDOE is in the process of developing guidance for school divisions on reporting to law enforcement. This adjusted system allows us to support principals as we await impending guidelines. Now, we would like to give special recognition to the Superintendent's Advisory Group on Education. These emerging leaders polled their classmates, collaborated across the division, researched national dress code policies and gave dynamic presentations on what they felt would be an appropriate way to modernize our dress code. Their efforts were invaluable. Additionally, there were areas where their recommendations aligned with the new state code. Again, we would like to thank them for their work. So, in an effort to be more inclusive around religion, gender, equity, privacy and reduce bias and harassment in the enforcement of any code of student standards for dress and grooming, the General Assembly now requires dress codes to be gender-neutral and reflect equitable standards. The guidelines necessitated the following adjustments. We can no longer designate male or female. We can no longer use terms that directly impact students of one gender. Also, the attitude towards certain garments have become more mainstream, necessitating an adjustment, and the students were very involved with this component here. The following garments are now permitted. Ethnically specific or significant headwear, athletic slides and clothing that resembles leggings, jeggings, tights or yoga pants worn underneath a shirt, shorts, dress or skirt that is mid-thigh length. This revision, excuse me, this revised dress code also closes the loop that allows for benign articles of clothing worn by groups of students engaged in disruptive behavior. Finally, principals or their designee are no longer permitted to make direct physical contact with a student or student's attire nor require any student to disrobe while checking for a dress code violation. As a reminder, we seek your approval for the proposed revisions of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook at the September 15th Board Meeting. At this time, I will answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Yes, Dr. Best.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you said there were five things from the General Assembly?
Yes, ma'am.
And the school division would address three?
Yeah, so three are, impact the handbook tonight.
Okay, so the other two did not impact the handbook?
So, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was, that was my question. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Any additional questions? All right, so we will be taking this matter up at our September Board Meeting for adoption of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. All right.
Thank you.
That will now moves us to, to item 5.04, School Renaming.
My pages are going to get wet now. Good evening again, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searl Swall, School Board members and Dr. Parker. I am here tonight based on your request to research school names and advise the board on a process should you wish to consider renaming some of our schools. As we began to take a look at this topic, we started with one question. Which schools potentially not reflect the current values of Newport News public schools when it comes to inclusion and diversity? I would like to share with the board our methodology. We started this process by researching names of all of our schools. According to the Daily Press Archives, prior to 1958 and the consolidation, Newport News named its schools after historical people, while Warwick County named public schools for various parts of the county. After consolidation of the two localities, newly constructed schools were named to honor former superintendents and principals. Next, I'd like to share our school name categories. During our research, we determined that these schools here are named for geographic locations in our city. Many are named for communities in which they were built, nearby landmarks or the roads on which the school properties were located. These schools were named in honor of individuals including board chairmen, superintendents, educators and other individuals of prominence. A very diverse group. Eight are named in honor of former superintendents, as I mentioned, nine are named for educators, including six, including six African-American educators, some who fought for equal pay, equal access for African-American students. Two are named for school board chairman and members. Four are named for some individuals of prominence, Huntington, Marshall, Newsom Park and Carver. These schools are named for specific programs of focus, or in the case of heritage, as a way to acknowledge the history of several of our schools that have closed. I'd now like to talk about tiers. After conducting our research, we identified several school names that may warrant further study. Then we tiered them. Today, this evening, we will focus on Tier One. Schools whose namesakes may be in conflict of this philosophy that I shared of diversity and inclusion. Schools in Tier Two are named for areas and again, places in our city, and some may have been plantations. Schools in Tier Three are named after school board members and superintendents who served during massive resistance when schools were segregated. Schools in Tier Two and Three are schools that will need further research, and those are schools that the board may discuss at a later time. But again, my focus this evening will be on Tier One. Horace Hardaway Epps was a pioneer educator in Newport News at the turn of the century. He served as a principal of the 28th Street School Institute and became the first principal of Newport News High School. He also directed the city's first census in 1896. While Epps Elementary School was named in his honor because of his contributions to education, our research has found that Mr. Epps served a brief time in the Confederate Army. He graduated from VMI in 1870. His military record at VMI indicates that he fought with the VMI Corps of Cadets in Richmond, in the Richmond trenches. He is credited with 12 days of wartime service. He served as a teacher and a school official in colleges in Kentucky and Alabama. Horace Epps also served as a school principal in Newport News, as I mentioned, and the first principal of Newport News High. He was included on the Tier One list because of his service in the VMI Corps and with the Confederate Army. Earl Nelson Elementary School. Earl Nelson's career in education spanned 50 years. He was a superintendent of schools in Newport News from 1946 to 1965. Under his leadership, the Newport News and Warwick School Districts merged. The elementary school was named in his honor upon his retirement in 1865. I mentioned his time as superintendent, which spanned over 20 years. However, it was also during massive, massive resistance, excuse me, when separate but equal was state law. Also during his tenure in 1958, an African-American family submitted three applications for admission to a white elementary school. Mr. Nelson is quoted as saying that the school Mr. Nelson is quoted as saying that the school board was under no action of the federal court to mandate school integration. Without a court order, a federal court order to integrate, the Newport News School Board decided against any change and opted to wait and see what the outcome of the massive resistance program would be, continuing segregation. And this is why R.O. Nelson is in Tier One. Next, Lee Hall Elementary School, which is named for the Lee Hall Mansion in the northernmost area of our city. The Lee Hall Mansion was the home of a prominent local farmer who was also a slave owner. During April and May of eighteen sixty-two, the home was used as a headquarters by the Confederate generals Joseph Johnston and John Magruder. The mansion is one of the last remaining Annabelle homes of the Virginia Peninsula. It is owned and operated as a museum by the City of Newport News. The mansion was the home of the Lee family in eighteen sixty-two. The Lees fled their home as the peninsula became one of the first battlegrounds of the Civil War. Between, between April and May of eighteen sixty-two, as I mentioned, was used as a headquarters for Confederate generals. From this location, Magruder and Johnston directed the defense of peninsula against, um, Major General George McClutten's advancing Union Army, and for weeks delayed the Union advance. And this is why Lee Hall Elementary is in Tier One. Dozier Middle School. Mr. Dozier lived in the Lee Hall area of the city and served on the school board for twenty-seven years. He served as the chairman of the Warwick and Newport News School Boards for numerous years during this time, when separate but equal was state law. During his tenure in nineteen fifty-eight, an African-American family submitted three applications for admission to a white elementary school. With a, without a federal court order to integrate, the Newport News School Board decided against any change and again opted to wait for the outcome of massive resistance, which continued segregation. Also during his tenure, an African-American teacher, Dorothy Watkins, which Watkins Early Childhood Center's name after, sued our school division to get equal pay for white teachers and African-American teachers. And this is why Dozier Middle School is also in Tier One. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Brooks to come up, and she will talk about our policy and also a number of processes that we'd like to share with the Board per your request. Mrs. Brooks?
And thank you, Mr. Wright. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Parker. Before you is this school board's current policy on the naming of schools. It includes the opportunity for public input and gives the Board the authority to make the final decision on school names. With the Board's consent, we can follow a slight variation to this process for considering the renaming of schools. We would like to share a twofold process for the Board's consideration that would lead us in answering these questions. First, what if any school name should be changed? And Mr. Wright shared, uh, a few potential names with you this evening. And second, if the decision is made to change the names of schools, how do we determine or solicit input on what the new name should be? Now, we have completed our initial research and the first three action steps on the chart before you for considering whether or not a school name should be changed. If the school board reaches consensus to move forward, we have developed several steps for your consideration. So, starting with step four, we would suggest further study and investigation by a third party or historian and the creation of a diversity and inclusion task force led by school division staff and comprised of members from community organizations, our PTAs, our faith-based communities, our parents, students, and others. The task force would work with the historian to further investigate potential school names to be changed and lead the community through a public input process. Following that process, the task force would bring its recommendations to the school board for your consideration. If acceptable, the school board could con, con, conduct public hearings on the recommendations and consider potential action. Now, if the school board decides to move forward to change the names of specific schools, we are sharing a process that's similar to the processes used by several school divisions around the state, including Richmond, Hanover, Prince William, and Fairfax County School Divisions to answer the question of how do we determine or solicit input on what new, what the new name should be? So here are some of the action steps that the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force could implement. First, the task force would ensure that it includes representation from the communities of the schools to be renamed. Next, the task force would develop a nomination process to solicit school names. Our school division's communications team would assist the task force with advertising this process. The nomination form would include a request for background information and the rationale for the name being proposed. After the nomination period closes, the task force would post the suggested names for public review on the school division's webpage and social media posts, and in newspaper ads, et cetera. Next, the task force would conduct public input sessions to gather feedback, and then the task force would vet and narrow down the name suggestions and submit its recommendations to the superintendent for review. And lastly, the superintendent would provide his final recommendations for new names to the school board for your consideration and potential action. And now, Mr. Wright will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. And we'd also like to, uh, thank all those that were involved with assisting us with this process. And thank you, Dr. Parker, for always trusting us to bring forth information as such. You have any questions, Board?
Yes, sir. Questions?
Well, um, thank you for that, uh, report. And, um, I'm just sitting here clinking at the governor's letters, and we know there comes, it is a time that if we were going to change names, the time is, is now. However, uh, we do know, uh, that we are in a COVID time, and, um, this is very, very high on our list. And, um, I hope that those that are out there watching today, that we hear from our public and the teachers and our historians in the area. And so that when we do, uh, bring this to task at our next meeting or whatever next meeting we've come to in September, to vote on if we were going to change names or not, that we will be informed and, um, that we've been informed of these four names, and we will have better understanding of if that's the way we need to do. So, uh, some of these names could be hurtful. They traumatize, uh, our students, they impact. You know, they represent slavery, injustice, uh, and again, the old Jim Crow area. And, uh, and also they represent, some could represent, you know, the prison pipeline, school, the prisoner pipeline. Uh, that being said, um, it is time, um, but I know we're in a COVID time. And I'm gonna tell you myself, I know, um, I don't want you to spend all of our time, our go right now, let's get the kids back in school. Number one goal is get kids back in school. But I, I know it's time for us to at least bring this to the table, put it on the stove, we can put it on back burner for just a little bit longer. But I do would really, really, really love to hear from our public and our citizens here. I didn't grow up here, and I need to have more information before this vote's taken.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Uh, Dr. Best?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Is this the time?
Yes, it is.
Okay, actually, you kind of prepared something. So, and I too, I concur with, um, Mr. Hunter. Our priority is COVID nineteen, making sure that students are in school safe, and, uh, students are safe, staff is safe, and that we're doing what's in the best interest of our students, students to educate them. So I, I concur with that as well. So I'll read my statement. Not too long ago, a post was made on social media featuring former Newport News Superintendent R.O. Nelson. Superintendent Nelson, who refused, who refused admittance to, who had refused admittance to an all-white school for three African-American students because according to him, the present school board was under no action by the federal court. And he said he was approaching the planning for the nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine school year with no planning for integration. Mind you, that this was more than four years after the unanimous nineteen fifty-four Supreme Court Brown versus the Board of Education decision that decided separate but equal racial segregation was indeed unconstitutional and further directed district courts and school boards to proceed with desegregation with all deliberate speed. This was in nineteen fifty-four. The parent who shared this post is the mother of a Newport News twenty-twenty graduate, and she stated regarding the name of R.O. Nelson Elementary School, "This is abusive to the psyche of our children, a state of emergency." As a child who attended Newport News Public Schools, I was that child whose psyche was abused. I was ten years old when my father told me that I would attend Stonewall Jackson Elementary School. He shared with me some background. I took the initiative and I further looked up what the encyclopedia had to say regarding Stonewall Jackson. I recall that the information that was written, it was not bad, it was not negative. But the fact that General Jackson fought for the Confederacy and had they won a war, God only knows how much longer slavery possibly could have been legal. I hated going to that school every single day, and when asked, I was embarrassed to say the name of that school. Each day as the bus pulled up to that school, my attitude soured and it reflected in my grades and in my behavior. Inclusion and diversity are values espoused by Newport News Public Schools. Individuals for what schools are named after should reflect these values and should be people who do not believe in excluding any segment of our communities. The question was asked, did people just become offended? And why didn't they say something? And just like me, as a ten-year-old girl feeling so helpless, the time in history, the climate, laws, and those in control many times precluded people from speaking up or the outcome of protests such as equal pay for teachers was denied by those in control. Because of the social unrest throughout the country, dialogue has been opened, is being encouraged regarding issues on race, racism, discrimination, and history, and how these things impact our everyday lives. And why now? In this current time and climate, more people are willing to listen. More people are willing to consider that someone else's experience may actually have value. Naming public schools after Confederate soldiers, officers, and segregationists, people who denied an equal education, in particular, and equal rights and access to all people in general, it was intentional, it was offensive, and it was just plain wrong. My experience as a Newport News, as a student in Newport News, did not reflect that of the division that cared about my psyche. I recall that our report cards had a picture of an obvious Caucasian boy and girl, and our teachers encouraged us to color that picture, and they said, "Make them look like you." I remember the secondhand books that we received, which we had to immediately cover to preserve them even longer. And many times, these were books that came from schools attended by only white students. Inside the cover, we saw the names of those schools and many times the names of those students. These books too also lacked pictures and stories of people that looked like me. At that time, Newport News Public Schools, like much of the state, did not value equality, inclusion, and diversity. But now, I'm proud to say that it does. And therefore, the names of our schools should reflect as such. When we know better, we do better. And at this time, I support the changing of the names of the schools, beginning with Tier One. Changing those schools to names that are reflective of our school division values. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Ammon?
Just looking at the prospective next steps, because we've got a couple tiers in here also of task forces or committees. And I absolutely also respect the concern that we want to, um, we want to focus on getting the kids in schools, and we have a lot on our plate. But I, would it be too onerous, uh, on the administration if we were to look at, um, making this an action item next month? So the public's had a chance to, Tier One, looking at those particular schools, the first step. Do we want to change those names? And then maybe proceed with a committee or a group to solicit and come up with names? Um, and secondarily, maybe more micro, um, are we considering on this task force or committee bringing in maybe some current students, some current stakeholders that are going to these schools? Um, because they've come up with really good ideas and suggestions in some of our other efforts.
It's all.
Yes, absolutely. We had students on the list that Mrs. Brooks.
Okay, okay. So I guess the first.
I suppose, uh, to paraphrase the question, um, maybe you could just briefly outline what a task force would look like and perhaps what a, um, uh, what the, what the task for, uh, task force would be tasked to do.
Well, I'll answer that, Mr. Wright, if it's, if it's okay with you. I know the team has been working on, on this and doing the research. Uh, but in my, uh, in my vision of what a task force would look like approach, I would bring in, uh, members of our community organizations that have long, long-served our community, both, um, both minority and majority of, um, populations. And we would want a diverse group of, of people. We would want representation from those areas of the city, people who have attended those schools, uh, and, uh, and our current students to be a part of that. Um, I think we, we, um, we have a lot of historians in this area who, uh, who also understand our history, um, the, the diverse history of the peninsula area in, in a greater context. And I think we need to give the, give a forum to hear from those individuals also. And then the work would be to, if, if charged by this Board, to come back to look at a reasonable process for, uh, for developing new names, if that is the, what we're tasked to do, um, and with, that involves a community-based process. Uh, whether it's cert, whether it's a survey selection and, uh, and, and then bringing back, uh, finalizing a list through a, through a, through a process. Um, but ultimately, that list would be vetted before, before it comes back to the Board with, um, with some level of, of feedback from our communities.
Yes, Mr. Ealing.
I definitely agree with, um, thank you for that amazing presentation. It was, it was, it was very interesting and, um, a lot of stuff I didn't know. And I do agree with my Board members. I think it is very important to do further studies for renaming the schools because we definitely, unlike Dr. Best was saying about R.O. Nelson's, I had no clue the history of that school. So I definitely feel that that's something we should look at too. Um, I don't think not right now. I think our main focus should be getting kids back in school. Just like my colleague just said, she was having problems with ParentView. I get so many emails from parents who, you know, we, we transitioning to, um, virtual, which is our presidential, presidentially for this, what we're going through right now. So I feel like all our focus and our administrators and our, um, senior staff need to be focused on making sure our kids get the instruction that they need, making sure all the kids have internet at home, making sure teachers have the resources that they need. And I would hate for y'all to take away a lot, a lot of time going towards this, because I'm sure it's a lot of work when in September, school is starting. We all know it's not going to be a perfect, salient situation. Stuff is going to happen. We never done a whole hundred percent virtual K through twelve. So I would hate to see us focusing on this September, October, where we're just going into something brand new, where teachers are going to be emailing you to death. They're gonna be emailing us to death because it's, it's new. So to put our focus on renaming of schools right now, where children aren't even in the schools, our focus should be on giving teacher support, giving parent support, giving kid support. And then maybe like around November, December, when things have settled down, it may be the idea time to maybe. it may be the idea time to maybe revisit, let's think about renaming these schools, because we are in the middle of a pandemic, and we do want our community's support as much as possible. And I think we're gonna, we might be overtaxing the community, because we, we're going to need our community 100% support with making sure our babies are okay to go back to school. We're going to need our faith, our faith-based groups, our churches, they may have to be, we might have to use their facilities for outreach for us, parents who don't have the ability to stay at home with their children. So we're asking them to be a partner with us in the community to this, be a partner with naming of schools. We, I think we're asking for a lot when our focus right now, especially these first two nine weeks, until we get adjusted, it should be on education and making sure kids, teachers, and parents have all the tools they need to be, to be successful in this pandemic. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Any, any comments, questions online?
Go ahead, Lisa, if you have any, I mean, excuse me.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Harris.
All right, thank you, sir. You know, there's never a wrong time to do the right thing, and I don't think it's a point of, it obviously seems a conversation, it's a point of win. And so, Mr. Chairman, I just, I, it gets from my, me as an individual, I think the sooner the better. There are some things that you do not lag on. Also, I think our administration is capable of executing multiple tasks simultaneously. And we, we have, we have the best school administration on the peninsula, so I, I have no doubt in my mind that the administration can handle opening a school and also attending to this task. And let's kudos to Dr. Parker for a great staff that he has put together. At the end of the day, I think someone, it might have been Dr. Best, stated, it is something, once you have learned, and once knowledge is given to you about certain situations, and yes, some kids grow up all their life, and including grown-ups, and don't know or fail to research, fail to inform themselves, but in the light of what has been going on in the United States of America this year, in this time, this is the time to execute and do what is, and I'm speaking for myself, what is morally right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, any further questions? All right. Yes, yes.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, I definitely, I'm very fond of Mr. Wright, and I want to make sure he has, he is, gets home safely. I think a Mr. Comment was made that Mr. Epps was on Tier One because he was a V, in the, associated with the VMI Corps of Cadets and the Confederate Army. I want to make sure we're clear that it's because of his affiliation with Confederate Army. I know, I have many great affiliations with members of VMI, the VMI Corps of Cadets, and have served with members of VMI, and I do not need those gentlemen looking for me. That being said, we want to make sure we make a point of clarification.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a final comment, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Alau.
Great, thank you. We really appreciate the work that the staff has done to get us this information, and yes, it does not, it is no, it is not unnoticed that this, even this information was gotten to us during a very, very busy time, in this unprecedented times as we're preparing to work with students in a remote environment. And that is our first and foremost concern, as we need that to go well. The amount of time's been put in there, the amount of uncertainty that we still know, I keep saying we have to be proactive and reactive in this space. However, making sure, it is imperative that the names of our schools do reflect the diversity and inclusive culture of our district that we value. You know, we've just worked so diligently to create a climate that speaks of inclusion for our students. This should be part of that narrative. This is part of their education. As we are living in the United States right now, with the sign of the times that we're going through, for us not to be part of that narrative for our students that touches them most closely, we would be very, very remiss to do that. If we as educators don't do that, then the question really does beg itself, then, you know, who will? And it just really remains our responsibility to evaluate and address. Now, that being said, we have a lot on our plate. So, Dr. Parker, our board really does look to you for your feedback from your staff and yourself to know how these priorities are able to be accomplished in the best way that we possibly can. So the board will be looking to you for direction in that way, being duly noted, though, that we want to approach these expeditions late. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right. So, I'll wrap this up with explaining sort of where we were, where we are and how we got to, to this portion today. Even prior to the murder of George Floyd, members of the board were pushing an issue of, let's look at these school names and, and look at the, the legacy and the hurt that some of the school names caused. And so, this has been a, a very, a months-long process in, in terms of pulling this together, so I want to thank the, the staff and all the hard work that has gone into really pulling together a lot of really good facts and information. And I certainly learned some new things that I, that I didn't know, when I thought I had already, you know, read quite a bit and been to the museums and things of that nature, so very thankful for pulling that together. And so, people may ask, why now? So, the, the why now portion is, in addition to members of the board bringing this up as a, as a topic of concern, the first thing that I received right after we, it being installed as, as the chair, was a letter from the, from Governor Northam and from the Secretary of Education, Secretary Carney and Governor Northam, imploring the board and all board chairs in Virginia to take the time now to look at renaming their schools, and take the time now to, to, to make the name changes. And I received that letter on July the 6th and shared that with the board, July the 7th, shared that letter with the board. We did not take up this topic in July, even though we had multiple board members making requests on this topic, because we were focused on return to learn, and so that's why we've now decided to, we elected to take up this topic here in August to hear a report. And so, I, again, thank, thankful to everyone for their flexibility during this, this time, because I know that for several members of the board, they feel like this, certainly they feel like potentially this was action deferred too long, that they, actions that they wanted to take. So, hearing the consensus that I believe I do here, here this evening, we'll go ahead and, and schedule an, an action in September for a vote on the Tier One, the Tier One schools, for those to enter into a renaming process, and we'll hear from Dr. Parker at that time as to further details as far as timeline, the questions that were asked tonight in terms of what level of, of rigor and difficulty and stress it may place on the administration as they're working towards returning to learn and getting the school year started, and certainly presenting a timeline that is, that allows us to essentially do the walking and chewing gum at the same time, meaning that being able to rename the schools, but not doing it in such a way that it takes away from the education of our kids. So, we'll trust Dr. Parker to come back with that, that analysis and that report, and we will take up for action renaming of, a declaration to rename schools in Tier One. So, then there will be a public hearing, of course. We'll have a public hearing on our schedule for September, so that we can hear from the public and as well that the public will have an opportunity to make comments virtually as well for those members of the public who are not comfortable coming, you know, coming forward physically. So, that we, we'll, we'll go ahead and take that opportunity now to have a public hearing, and that we'll schedule this for action in September. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for a great report.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, now we'll move on to item 5.05, which is a construction report. Do we have any reports on construction?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, hearing none. We'll move on to item 5.06. So, Dr. Parker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to, again, thank my staff for the work that they've put forth this evening, and not only in reporting to the board, but also just the work that's taken place in operations, human resources, instruction, school leadership, technology, just a phenomenal, a phenomenal staff, and I thank you, Mr. Harris, for your gracious comments. I too feel that we have a very, very good staff, and we, and we work very hard together, and we work very well together. With that being said, any, anytime we're tasked with the will of the board and the work of the board, we take that very seriously, and we will come back to you in September with a, with a streamlined approach to meeting your, your objectives. So, with that being said, I do have a few formal announcements. One, I'd like to just reach out to our students, if, if there are any students viewing, and I know Jordan's been doing a great job on, on Twitter, maintaining a presence, and thank you, sir, for, for keeping our students engaged. You are a true student leader, and we look forward to your leadership. Any students out there, I just want you to say, we're, we're going to try to find a way to make, to make this beginning of the year exciting for you, and as always, we want to hear your ideas, and we'll create a venue for you, for that to happen. We understand the challenges of starting in a virtual environment. We focused on a lot of things this evening, but I just want you to know that at the, at the core of our decision-making, we always focus on you. And we, we hear from a parent tonight, we need to find a way to make education work for all of our students, and that's the charge that we have as a school organization. We have to find ways to make it work for everyone. So, we know it's, nothing's perfect unless you're in a building, in a school, working with our great teachers and, and seeing them every day and seeing your friends, but in the, the way we're going to start may not be the way we end. So, we want to make sure that you stay engaged and take your studies seriously, because they will be your grades, and, and, and we, we want to make sure that we give you the best instruction possible. So, get ready for school, get excited, and make sure you're ready to show up after a labor day for, for your, for your first week of classes. So, I'd also like to congratulate our summer graduates. So I'll start with our slide, there's our formal presentation, okay? I'd like to start with congratulating our summer graduates. Last Tuesday, nearly 40 students received their high school diploma during our summer graduation ceremony at Heritage High School. These students put in a lot of hard work over the summer to complete their requirements. They are great models of resilience and commitment, and it was great seeing them in their, in their caps and gowns, the final members of the class of 2020 walking across the stage. I congratulate our students and their families and wish them much success in the future. This week, we are welcoming 215 new and, new and experienced educators to the Newport News family. Our new, our new teachers reported this week. Our schools are hosting in-person and Zoom orientations, and our new team members are getting acquainted with their, with their administrators, colleagues, and Newport News Public Schools. Mr. Brown and I also filmed greetings for our new teachers, which was viewed, which they have already received, and thank you for doing that. We also launched a New Teacher Welcome Week website with numerous resources for our new educators. It includes welcome videos, schedules, and professional development opportunities. A special welcome to all of our new teachers, and we look forward to your success and working with our students. Newport News Public Schools has launched an online and in-person school supply drive to help ensure our students begin the school year ready to learn. There are several ways to, to help. If you'd like to help in the community, visit our website to learn more about purchasing a supply kit that will be shipped directly to us for distribution to our students. Community members may also drop off school supplies at several locations listed on our website between now and, and August 26th. Or you may make a financial donation to the Newport News Education Foundation, who have partnered with us to ensure that our, that our students are receiving great supplies for this new year. All donated funds will be used to purchase school supplies for students in need. Visit nnschools.org for more information. The new school year begins on Tuesday, September 8th. I want to take this opportunity again to welcome students, families, and our staff to the 2021 school year. I made a remark a few weeks ago that we will find a way to get excited about this school year. Nothing will keep us from being excited about teaching and learning and loving on our students. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I conclude my remarks and look forward to the next few weeks getting our school year up and, up and running.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Parker. All right, now that moves us to item number six, audience with individuals, and so, at this time, we will take any cards and speakers. Do we, Madam Clerk, do we have any cards at this time?
No, sir.
All right, no cards? All right, then we will move forward with, in the agenda, to item number seven, matters by the school board. Mr. Moody, let's start with you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Hope that you have found this school board meeting insightful as I have through it all. Fantastic things are still happening in Newport News Public Schools. I would like to thank Dr. Parker and the senior staff for everything that they are doing to ensure that we remain college, career, and citizen-ready. I have two things, two major things to share this evening, students, my student family. Even through this pandemic and the virtual start to our school year, please stay connected to your school community. I encourage you to participate in virtual clubs, activities, and mentoring opportunities. And if you need further help or assistance, be sure to reach out to our fantastic teachers who are still here, encouraging and ensuring we are college, career, and citizen-ready. And also, I invite everyone to stay connected with me via social media. I hold the handle @StudentRepNNPS on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Thank you and have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moody. I think that radio is broadcasting. Yeah, you sound, you sound perfect, sound wonderful. All right, Mr. Ely.
I feel nervous going right behind him. I just want to thank all the presenters today, the information that was received to us was amazing. It's always good to know and to hear more in detail what's going on in Newport News Public School system. We definitely are unprecedented times, and we're just going to have to work together as a family. It's nerve, you know, just looking at social media, talking to your colleagues, talking to people in the community, everyone is nervous. I am nervous. No one, no one had the right idea, because we haven't, we haven't seen anything like this ever before. But one thing I do know, Newport News family, we're very strong. We have some of the best teachers, some of the best educators, the best staff, and we will get through this. Dr. Parker and your leadership team, y'all are doing an amazing job. I know y'all work at around o'clock night and day trying to make sure this return to learn plan is best and safe for all kids, staff, and students. But I just want to encourage the community, this is a time to come together, like Dr. Best always say, our churches, you know, we always call on their support. We, we need all the support we can to make sure we meet the needs of all children across the division. My heart especially goes out to the children with ESL, ESL population, children with IEPs, children with disabilities. Like when the parent was speaking today, my heart just, you know, it did something. I don't know what it did, but it just dropped, because I, I just couldn't imagine how I have been to educate a child with special needs or disability to an IEP, or English as a second language. I understand that that's going to be very challenging, but I do want to make sure that we continue to be safe, because that's, that's my main focus, making sure everyone is safe as well as getting a great education. But like I said before, we have some of the best teachers in Newport News and, and staff. We will be creative and we will get through this, not as a team, but as a family. And that's it, and I look forward to a productive 2020 school year, and I am, I just want to make this clear, I am in support of changing the school names, I'm just in support of doing it the right way, having the community involved, hearing their output, making sure that- right way, having the community involved, hearing their output, making sure that we get schools started first because we have so many children that may not have, may not have their laptops. Parents have questions, kids with IEPs, children with disabilities. That's my main focus. That's my main priority. And then after we get through that, we could name the schools whatever we want to name them. But my main focus is making sure we're entering this pandemic, going back to school, teachers are safe, children are safe, and kids are getting a great education so they can be the best they can be in America. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. All right, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools.
Oh, Mr. Moody, I think I already took that line.
Again, thanks to the presenters today. We've learned a lot about return to learn. We've learned a little bit about renaming of our schools. And again, congratulations to the seniors who just graduated from our summer school. A job well done. And we look forward to bringing our kids back. Again, I'm in favor of changing schools' names as well. But we have a task at hand. And the task at hand is to, you know, ensure that our students get back to learning and whatever that may look like. We, that, that should be the school board first, should be our first goal, is to ensure that our kids are back learning, either virtually and preferably in person somehow, some way. And as I stated earlier tonight, I do have concerns with the COVID and the increase in COVID. I would hate to have a 11th grader who didn't get enjoy their time as a 8, 11th grader, and then their, their last year in school coming in and may, and possibly may, not see a classroom until March. It's imperative that we give our staff, Dr. Parker, their undivided attention, undivided attention to ensuring that we have a plan, this late way, this laid out to ensure that our kids, our students can learn and learn properly and get the education that they do need. The school names will be here. I'm, I, I read part of the governor's letter today. We've got it. We absolutely have it. But where does that stand as a board? Where does that stand as our priorities? Priority right now, Mr. Ely, basically stated, you know, I don't want to take something away. And I know, Dr. Parker, I know you have a phenomenal team, but just to go and lay out a plan for that, if you can do it, fine. And I hope that you will bring a plan back to us and hopefully it be, be it three months from now, six months from now, nine months from now, or next year. But, you know, when we vote, we have it. And I believe when you're changing names of schools, public buildings, we need to be informed, you know, not just for the 24 hours or 48 hours. We need to be informed. We need historians. And even to bring it back here next week, we're going to hear from the public sometime during the month. We're going, they're going to come in front of us and then we're going to make a decision. I, I don't think that's the way, just rushing. We, we have time. We have time. I heard from each one of our school board members. Let's not rush and be hasty about changing names of buildings, you know, when we don't have all the information. Just, we're, we, we've been educated tonight. And so to make a change, to have the public come here, I want to hear what the public has to say. And I want to then evaluate what the public has to say without having to do it that same night. I think Ms. Ammon has mentioned that and I, and now I get it, just sitting here listening to. And I was for voting. If we want to vote it next week, that's fine. I hope there's some way that we can get those comments. So those folks are out there listening, you historians, you psychologists, you've lived here, you've made a part of it, please, please start sending those comments in so that we can have an evaluated and informed decision when it comes to us next month, when we have to come and bring this to our table to vote. That being said, again, read a book and we look forward to our new students coming back and welcoming the kids back, open arms, either be virtually or a hybrid model. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Dr. Best.
Okay, first of all, I want to say it's the most wonderful time of the year. This will be my third year not being an employee in a public school as schools are opening. And I, I still, I don't know if I should be happy about this or sad about this, but I still don't sleep the first night before school opens. So I'm wondering if this year, will I sleep or not? Probably not, even though it's virtual. But anyway, it's the most wonderful time of the year and I'm excited about it. And I just know that great things are going to happen in Newport News. So I just have a couple of comments. Again, I could never say it enough, I like to thank the staff for such awesome reports because as always, you all bring it and you bring it in such a professional and a detailed manner. And sometimes I don't say thank you, so I want to say thank you a thousand times tonight in case I don't say it the next time. But you guys do a fantastic job with that. Regarding COVID-19, of course, our number one concern is safety and educating our students. So make no mistake, the priority is providing the best education possible for, for our students. That's always our number one priority. But at the same time, the other business of the school division, it continues. And I'd like for the public to know that we have not forgotten about things such as Huntington. And I am one of two board members that will be working directly with the city officials. And we're going to begin to meet and hopefully we'll have an update soon regarding what's going on with Huntington. And although for the last several months that we have been, the public have been allowed to submit comments in writing, and those comments have become a part of the record for the school board meeting as witnessed tonight. So please note to the public, because a couple of people have asked me about this, that you will now be allowed to come to the school board meetings to make public comments. So we encourage you again to come on out, of course, practicing safety. And also, but just keep in mind that this may mean that a small number of people may be allowed in at a time. You might have to wait and you might have to wait outside. So I encourage you to be patient. Again, it's the most wonderful time of the year and I encourage everyone to just be safe. And, and again, I'm looking forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Ms. Ammon.
And I agree, it's the most wonderful time of the year, particularly. And I remember, I remember growing up seeing a Staples commercial that was, it was the most wonderful time of the year and it was back to school. It was not a holiday commercial. I think you can, might be able to still Google it. But I just want to thank everyone for the excellent presentations. I know a lot of work has gone into it. I am constantly reminded of, you know, we are, we are all here to educate our students and so much goes into that. We've got the presentations on redoing the, and building out the classrooms for the Aviation Academy, the gym floors. That was a welcome sight, the Gildersleeve Gym Floor. And I really appreciated the presentation on the virtual learning. That is very encouraging as a board member and as a parent who's going to get to experience that. I feel much more, much more comfortable, very excited about all of our Virtual Virginia experience and what we can bring in. I think that's, that's wonderful. Just to encourage parents and students that haven't gone to get their Chromebooks, I did that today for my son. It was very quick, seamless, very smooth, in, out, in a matter of a few minutes. So you certainly can do it if you have a few, a few minutes to swing by your, your student's school. And as we get started, I know it's, we're going to be going through so much. All of this is new to us and I, we've gotten so much good feedback on, on committees and student input. Please don't stop giving us input, students and families, what's working, ideas, what's not. I think this will get better as we all go through it and everyone shares their experience and their ideas. So I'm looking forward to that. And I think, and we have all this going on. And I think we, some, sometimes there comes a time where we're called to do a lot more than we ever expected to have on our plates at a time. And I think, I think it's a really good point in time. And I think, I thank the team for the school naming presentation. And I too want to echo what Mr. Hunter encouraged, that if there are, is anyone with information, please send it to us. I think it would be great to be able to address this and feel very comfortable in September that we have a great handle on all the information, step one. And then maybe we can go forward to new names in a more, maybe in a more stretched out time throughout the, as we get our arms around virtual learning and COVID. But I think, you know, we've got a lot of good resources in the community and hopefully we will hear some good information between now and September. I think that would be, that would be ideal if we can do that. So thank you to everyone.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ammon. All right, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to give a special thanks to Mr. Chris Jenkins and Madam Clerk for keeping me connected while I am out in Western Kentucky and Tennessee. I really appreciate that. And also to the staff for their informative briefings. I'm always in a state of learning when I listen to them. The other part is, you know, we as leaders are tasked with leading. And when you're tasked with leading, sometimes you don't always get the, you don't always get the perfect moment, the perfect time. Everything is not always in place. Because leaders knows the way, we go the way, and, and most importantly, we show the way. It is ironic that we are talking about history as we move forward, which is a great thing. Because one day someone would be talking about us. One day someone would be talking about the Newport News Public School Division and the school board 50 years from now. And we would become part of history. So there are times when there are not the right time or not the right place. But what leaders do, leaders set the example, leaders recognizes the strength that we have amongst us in the school division. Leaders let others make critically important decisions. Leaders also give them responsibility, which I think we have given that to Dr. Parker and his team. Leaders don't impose fear. Leaders also help them to plan for that action. And last but not least, Mr. Chairman, trust. Trust has to be extended. Trust has been extended. Now is time to perform. Thank you and you all have a good night. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo the same sentiments as everyone to Dr. Parker and the staff's tremendous effort in preparing the district for return to learn. We all know face-to-face learning is superior. I mean, that's why we do it. Right now, though, it's not safe. And my heart is really going out to the students as well as the teachers. So if you know a teacher, say a prayer of encouragement. This is going to really pull on their hearts in a special way. Fortunately, the special way that it's going to pull on it is that they're going to do their absolute best for our students. And we need to be ever so thankful for that. We are appreciative of the adjustments to instruction to keep our community safe as we begin our school year. It really is going to take our community to rally with our teachers and our students. So asking yourself, what can you do? Please wear your mask, social distance, so that we can all return to face-to-face as soon as possible. To our students, prepare for a dynamic year. Prepare to learn something about yourself. Also, I encourage you to explore what you like and to figure out how to do it best. And make sure you communicate with your parents and with your teachers. We're here to support you and this foundation of Newport News Public Education is for you. So parents, I urge you to keep in close, close contact with your students. You are going to be our conduit to the students right now because the teachers have not met our students. And so your role in this is ever, ever so important and we are here to help. So thank you so much. And I'm going to turn it back over to, to the chairman.
All right, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, so I stand between you and closing out. So I'll be, I'll be brief. A couple of housekeeping items, want to make sure the public is aware, as was mentioned several times tonight, we have reopened our face-to-face public comment input. We've consistently had, always had comment, public comments throughout the pandemic crisis. It was just virtual up to this point. Now, we have both virtual and in-person options for the public to make comments. And so that now actually is, is a benefit. So this was one of the things that are really wonderful. Sometimes, you know, in crisis, you, you develop new habits and new features and better ways of doing things. I would say that last month, we had more public comments, and I know there's no particular record, Madam Clerk, but you can probably talk to our previous clerk to find out. But I think that we set a record in the most public comments we've ever gotten when we held our vote on return to learn. So there is, I've, I've pointed that out to say there's tremendous benefit to the virtual formats that we, that we're taking on and the virtual capabilities and the digital learning that we are doing in our schools. And I am really genuinely excited about this time. And, and history is truly upon us. I do believe that we will potentially look back at, at this moment in terms of this being really a evolution in education and how we teach our students, really in a 24/7 type of format so that learning is constant and asynchronous. I went, as a, as a board member, this learning management system, having every student with a Chromebook, having all the elementary school students with iPads, being able to learn on demand. Four years ago, I went to a, a presentation by the, at the Virginia School Board Association Conference during a conference, and this was really a, a dream, you know, in, in terms of, wow, how, how great could we be? What could we do if we had that capability? Well, now, we actually have that capability. It is, it's been thrust upon us in some respects, but we have it. We've made the investments and we're in a position really to, I think, have probably one of our best years ever. And I'm, I am looking forward, Dr. Parker, to all of the success that we are going to have because I, I do, I do sincerely believe that this is going to be, really be an evolutionary type of a year where, where we look back and, and, and say that we were really able to do a lot more. We talked about it tonight in terms of bringing Virtual Virginia into our learning management system. So there's more courses being offered to students on demand. We, we've talked about parents being able to engage more. So in terms of family engagement, family engagement is potentially in this year never going to be higher. Parents have a whole myriad of ways, they actually have so many ways to engage with their children that parents are actually overwhelmed now, which is why we talked about a single sign-on for some of the devices. But there are so many ways for parents to be engaged and remain engaged with their children through our parent view, through the learning management system, that, and as well, we're, we're partnering with community partners so that they can be engaged with a child, which is the whole reason, the impetus for trying to get to this kind of digital format in the first place. How can we, what is the one tool and what is the thing that we can do? How can we bridge the gap between community, family, and education, all of bringing that all together and integrating that? Well, we're doing that right now. So that's why this is such a, you know, an exciting time. And it's going to be, and it's going to be a great year. I'm, I'm really believing that and trusting that it's, that it's going to be a wonderful year. We are going to, you know, take on and make, make a decision in terms of this, this, this school renaming business. And it is, you know, it's been a long time coming. And, and we're going to, but we're going to, we're going to deal with it. And we'll, and we'll grow and we'll build and trust each other through this process. We trust the public to provide input and to provide their, their comments. And then we'll trust the public. If, if we do move down a road, we'll trust the superintendent to work with the public on what the, the appropriate names for our community that reflect our community are. We, I will truly say that you, we can't talk about students being citizen-ready and tell them, don't worry about the bill, don't worry about the public building where you go to school every day. If we're going to talk to students about being- if we're going to talk to students about being citizen-ready. So the building where they go to school does potentially have an impact on them. It does matter. I know that in my own life, I remember the names of the schools that I went to, and I did look up the people whose namesakes were after the school. And it did make a difference in how I looked at the community and how I felt that the community looked at me. So I do know that it does make a difference for children. And so, you know, it's all part of our mission. And as we mentioned, we're going to do, we're doing big things, and we know that we can do lots of big things. And Dr. Parker, he's not scared at all in these challenges, in the face of these challenges. He and I talked about the challenges laying before us in terms of the year, and he's not flinching. And I know none of the administration is flinching in the face of these challenges. We've met everything head-on, and we're trusting that we're going to continue to push through this. Twenty-twenty was a challenging year, to say the least, and it's kind of like the year that keeps on punching, keeps on giving. I'll leave here tonight, and, you know, God willing, I'm going to be moving my son back into his dorm at college, or maybe not, right? So it's that kind of year where we're all learning to be more flexible and be really grateful for what we have. Because I wouldn't take back this time that I've had with my son for the world in terms of, it's truly been a blessing, this time period's been a blessing for me. As I'm sure, there's been many blessings for lots of families along with all the challenges and the strife and the difficulties that have come forward. So with that, we look forward to, we'll be executing many of our joint committees starting in September. We're excited the board's going to be launching out on doing their liaison committees, meeting with their city counterparts, leading up to our joint meeting where we'll start talking through the budget process and working through the details of that and doing our coordination with the city. We're looking forward to that partnership and it being a great year. And with that, we will see you all around this time again in September, meaning adjourned.